Okay, I am going to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And we'll start with roll call.
Rodriguez, here. Green, Swift, Fragoso, Kirline, Gonzalez Parber.
Here.
Chair Newton.
Here. And next, we will look at our agenda and see if anyone has any changes or wants to move to approve the agenda.
Is this better? Okay. Madam Chair, I was wondering if we could poll the audience or the public to see how many people are here for cannabis and/or the other projects. I'm just wondering if we should address the public and then maybe move the cannabis? Or do we have a lot of people here for the cannabis? Can we maybe get?
So, would people who are here to talk about cannabis policy, please raise your hands? Great. And I had scheduled it this way on purpose, so I really wanted to start with the cannabis and that way folks who know that their public -- that their planning items are coming after that may come later, so.
Yeah, I think we have enough people here.
Does someone want to move to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. I will then read the meeting protocol. The Chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Commission meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So, next, we will have public comment on non-agenda items. So, anyone who wants to come and speak on matters that are not on our agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Commission may do so now. We're going to ask that you please state the matter on which you wish to speak. Matters not appearing on the Commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the Commission Chair. Persons are not required to give their name or address, but it's helpful for speakers to state their name for the record and whether or not they are Fairfax resident in order that the Secretary may identify them. So, we'll open it up if anyone wishes to speak on something that is not on our agenda. All right, seeing none, we are going to move on to our -- well, we're going to skip over our consent calendar since we have no items on the consent calendar and launch into a discussion and consideration of an ordinance to permit and regulate adult cannabis businesses. And we're going to hear from our Town Manager, Garrett. But Garrett, before you start, I just want to say, I know we have a lot of stuff on the agenda, so I really want to try and keep us to an hour for this whole discussion and conclusion, if we can do that, depending on how long the public comment period takes. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that. I don't really want to spend the entire evening going over this, but I'm really hopeful that we can accomplish a lot in an hour.
So, great. Apologize, we originally were planning PowerPoint, but since there's no projector or screen here, we'll do it with -- we have some handouts. I gave you copies of the slides. There's some available, I believe, back there if people want to grab a handout to try to follow along. But briefly, good evening, Planning Commissioners. Basically, you may recall, last November 2017, the Council adopted a moratorium on commercial cannabis. Since then, it has been extended. The Council did have a whole series of discussions, but it actually referred the matter to your Planning Commission. That's September 20th. You start your discussion. Just meeting -- your meeting on the 25th, you actually had a discussion related to delivery only for the existing medical marijuana dispensaries. The Council actually introduced that ordinance at their November 7th meeting. And so, what we're doing this evening is really continuing the discussion from your September 20th meeting. And what I like to do is follow the same process as you did back in September. You may recall, we went through a whole series of categories. I'm going to try to summarize kind of what I thought the Planning Commission straw poll position was in certain issues. Like to get some confirmation on that. We still obviously have some outstanding issues to get some direction. And as the Commission -- as the Chair Newton indicated, you know, to the extent you could check back at one hour mark and see how far along you are, and then what we would do is really as the next step, we would come back to you at your November meeting, again, do the summary, and then continue discussions of some of the items, one of which will be micro businesses. So, with that, I really, if I can, I'll just run through the categories really briefly, summarize your positions, and then at that point, you could ask questions, maybe take a couple of comments, and then go into your discussion. So, and I apologize again, there's no PowerPoint, but really, category number one was elimination of commercial cannabis categories of use. The Planning Commission straw poll was six oh, support the Council's direction to eliminate certain categories, that is, commercial manufacturing of cannabis, distribution of cannabis products, commercial cannabis cultivation, cannabis testing laboratories. Now, the Town Council did eliminate micro businesses as a category. However, majority of the Planning Commission wanted to further discuss that issue, and that's one of the issues you'll discuss at your November 29th meeting. The second item was elimination of cannabis temporary events. The Planning Commission vote was five -- well, again, it was about five one, confirmed the Council's prohibition. However, one Commissioner didn't indicate they like to allow information tables at town events. We do allow information tables, but those tables aren't allowed to give out any samples, sell any product, or take any orders. But it is allowed, so maybe that addresses that issue and continues supporting elimination of cannabis temporary events. The third topical area was continuing to allow commercial medical cannabis dispensaries. Similar to the Planning Commission, the Commissioners supported the Council's direction to continue to allow that. Number four has to do with personal and medical cultivation, and the Planning Commission supported the Council's direction, which was up to six cannabis plants, whether for medical or non-medical purposes, may be grown indoor or outdoor, so long as the total number of plants does not exceed six plants per property. One of the questions raised was, what's the definition of plant? I believe the state definition is mature plant, and that's actually in our current cultivation ordinance, and it means a flowering plant. So, I would just use the state definition, that'd be a recommendation. We did recognize that our existing medical marijuana cultivation ordinance would need to be revised. Currently, that allows up to 18 outdoor mature plants. Under this scenario, that'd have to be changed to six. And then, really, the outstanding issue for some Planning Commission direction is what to do with multifamily units such as apartments. One suggestion would be, what you could do is you could say six, no more than six plants, indoor or outdoors, per residential unit. That would address the issue of each residential unit. However, Planning Commission may want to opine on, what is, what about outdoor limits? Because if you have an apartment complex that's, say, 50 units, would that mean they could have 300 plants outside? I don't know, maybe that's an issue, maybe it isn't. Balconies or balconies are concerned, and that's something to talk about or give us some direction. But it all might be a moot point.
Hold on just a second, Garrett.
Could I ask a question? I didn't find it anywhere in the readings. I understand about the six plants. Is there a regulation that limits the amount of cannabis once it's no longer on a plant that one can have?
You mean if you grow and -- you mean how much you could have in terms of dry product?
How much can you have? In your -- would that be in your possession or in your home or in your -- in your home?
Well, I could look up what it is possession out in public generally, but in your home, you're allowed to have six plants and all the cannabis those plants provide. So, it's kind of a vague standard. So, if you can get a lot of dried product out of six plants, you're allowed to have everything from those plants.
Are you required to grow all of it yourself? To have six plants full of?
Yes, that's the idea, that you would have the six -- you have six plants and you get your personal supply from that.
Okay, thank you. I'll let that go for now. Thank you.
Okay, and the last thing to point out is the town does have existing regulations for outdoor growing under the medical cultivation. And so, we do have screening standards. We have a provision that says not visible from the public right away. It could be, are those standards regulated? Hard to say, but that's just something, it'd be good to receive some direction from the Planning Commission on that topic. Category number five was allowing cannabis delivery in town, including retailers located out the town limits. The Planning Commission supported the Council's direction, which was continue to allow that. As you may recall, on October 25th, you actually recommended an ordinance to the Town Council that had to deal with allowing delivery-only operations for existing medical marijuana dispensaries. At that November 7th meeting, of which the Council introduced that ordinance, Council also talked about a business permit process for delivery-only operations for dispensaries. And in essence, what that does is it really adopted state regulations, in essence, for delivery standards. So, in terms of item six, and this is probably the key policy issue that both the Council and the Planning Commission are going to have to work on, is allowing some form of non-medical cannabis retail and set a limit on the number. So, PC did indicate that it supported some form of non-medical cannabis retail in town. It seemed like the Council majority also supported some concept, but then the key question was, what should be that, should there be a limit? What that limit should be? And really, are we talking storefront retail and/or delivery-only businesses? So, that's kind of the key question. And then, for the next slide, what we did is we just reiterated what the Council actually talked about. And what the Council talked about is they considered, well, should we have no retail storefronts and just allow delivery only? Should we just allow one, which in essence would be occupied by the existing medical marijuana operation? Should we have a limit of two to three retail storefronts, whether it's medical or non-medical? And should we allow up to two or three retail-only businesses, which maybe should be a separate limit from retail, I mean storefront retail, which allows people to go in and purchase product? Or should we adopt some slow-measured approach, which is a concept of maybe have a lower number, I'll make this up, two, and in the future, you could decide whether that should be more, maybe change it to three, or whatever that magic number should be. Now, what we tried to do in the staff report and the next item was, we tried to provide some factors for the Planning Commission to consider in really trying to help you kind of lay out those parameters in terms of what should be the number of storefront retailers or delivery-only retailers. And something to consider, we thought would be important, is the impacts on youth. And what are impacts on youth on delivery-only operations? What are the impacts on youth with storefront retail-type operations? Your Planning Director is here. He has some informal data related to where youth may congregate, where they may walk through town, and so that may help you in your decision-making process. Some of the other things, I think at the last meeting that you had, was one of the Commissioners mentioned that perhaps you should consider office standards for retail-type uses, which would mean maybe only on the second floor or entry to non-street frontage, sort of rear of the building. Again, if you did something like that, that would limit the number of locations in town because there aren't very many commercial two-story buildings, or at least they're not everywhere. Some of the other things you may think about is traffic. You know, you may require traffic studies. You may say, well, it's got to be on a place that has good traffic street access, maybe Surf Castle St. Drake only, for example. And then, something to think about is we do have a traffic impact, traffic, what is it, traffic report permitting process? TIP, I forget what that stands for. Traffic -- oh, there we go, traffic impact permit process. We do have that process. You may want to think about whether it should be subjected to that process or just be something separate. Another factor to consider is parking. You may want to establish onsite parking requirements, which case that would limit locations because not every commercial building actually has onsite parking. And if you actually created a parking ratio like restaurant, say, one to every 200 square feet or gross floor area, then you're even eliminating those locations even more because not every place meets that parking requirement. Think about, in terms of total number, should that be both medical and non-medical included in the one number? And something to think about is your current town code allows up to three medical marijuana dispensaries. So, that's just number three. Subset of all this discussion is what we refer to as category number seven, which is where to allow all these type of uses. The Planning Commission in general supported maintaining a state buffer zone, which is 600 feet from schools, daycares, and youth centers, but to allow exceptions depending on that specific use. So, it could be, some of those factors I just talked about could be factors that would help you decide on the locational type requirements. For example, if you said, well, you got to have a parking ratio, then you know that limits quite a few locations. But just keep in mind, right now, only the CH and CC zones allow for general retail uses. The CL zone allows for medical marijuana, but not non-medical marijuana, so that would need to be an amendment. Something to think about is, we have some CL zones that are a little further away from the downtown area, closer to residential areas. Maybe you eliminate a couple of the CL zones based on that criteria. Or you may decide to add to what's, there should be a buffer from. So, state says schools, daycares, youth centers, you may want to consider parks as an additional requirement. Now, for the audience, it's a little difficult, but there's also a map. So, what you have is you have the map that's actually in the packet, and that map shows where the locations are in town if you follow the state buffer zone. So, 600 feet, schools, daycares, youth centers. And what that really means is it's just what we refer to as the CH Highway Commercial Zone that basically is on Center Street between Petraico and Pastore. And then, we have a slide or a map that's in the staff report that just shows all the commercial zones in town, and those are in yellow. So, one of the other things, and we refer to as number eight, modifying existing cannabis standards, is the Planning Commission supported the Council's direction, use existing standards if possible. We have existing medical marijuana standards, but it is true, those would even need to be modified to reflect state law. And obviously, depending what we wanted to do with adult use, we need to develop those standards. Our recommendation is, really, we should try to simplify the town code as much as possible regarding both medical and recreation or adult use to reflect state regulations. So, for example, the state regulations talk about security, inventory, delivery standards, and probably it'd be best just to rely on those standards rather than coming up with our own. And we think what that does is, it makes it easier to check for consistency. It's easier if it gets audited, that we know what standards we're following as opposed to adding more into it. And what we're actually recommending is maybe the Planning Commission focus on those local circumstances where state regulations are silent. So, things like formula businesses, because we do have a formula business ordinance, and maybe Ben, he can opine more on that or share more information on what those impacts would be. And then, as I discussed earlier, you know, we talked about if you wanted to create a parking standard. And then, number nine as a category is the issue of requiring a use permit for applications. So, there was no consensus from really the Planning Commission or Town Council on the type of permit process. What we point out is, say, a cannabis business permit or licensing process, that's business-specific. It actually doesn't run with the property. So, if that business goes away or closes, that permit would then expire. Use permits actually run with the property, so that continues on even if that business isn't there. One of the things the Town Council discussed, now, of course, this is just for delivery-only, for existing medical marijuana dispensaries, is they're discussing the concept of administrative business permit process for that delivery only, meaning there would be application requirements and standards, but it would be reviewed, and if it met the requirements, then staff would actually issue that permit. And one thing to keep in mind is your existing town code for medical marijuana dispensaries requires the Planning Commission to approve a dispensary permit, but our take is that also runs with the land, and that requires a renewal every two years. So, really, your options are use permit, that's approved by the Planning Commission, or maybe a cannabis business permit process that can also be approved by the Planning Commission, or I suppose you could recommend something gets approved by the Town Council, but we're thinking, should really stay more with the Planning Commission because the Council is your appeal body. And then, a subset of this is, we talked about, and there's really no consensus on this, on the issue of, should we have a pre-application process like some other cities do? And so, the objective of that pre-application was set a minimum threshold by which people then, if they meet the minimum score, say, 80 out of 100, then they can apply for either use permit or cannabis business permit, depending on what the processes that selected. You know, there's lots of criteria out there, maybe use something from Samrafell, the county, or some other community. But the, really, the question is, for pre-applications, I think the benefit of that is if you get a lot of applications. If you get a lot of applications, that sort of sets a pre-screening, then only the best go through. Then, in that case, really, should you have an initial deadline process by which for do the pre-applications, or should it be first come, first served? I think if you get a lot of applications, you would think that it might be better you have an initial screening, so you all come in at once, then you have a certain pot of them or pool of them to choose from, and then you can pick the best ones, the best serves the needs of the community. I think on a first come, first serve, you could have this problem where someone submits an application, it's deemed incomplete, someone comes in while they're trying to get their application complete, we deem it complete, and all of a sudden, that one's first, and the other one who submitted earlier becomes second. But those are issues for the Planning Commission to maybe talk about if you want to first come, first serve. And then, the next issue that we had, that we talked about at the Council and Planning Commission, is allowing existing medical marijuana dispensaries to have a non-medical component. You could argue that you've already addressed that by allowing the existing dispensaries to have a retail-only component. We'd recommend, at least when it comes to storefront retail or other type uses, you just consider that within your broader discussion as opposed to just singling out a discussion related just to existing medical marijuana dispensaries. For tax revenues, Planning Commission agreed with the Council that that discussion should be put off until we know exactly what type of ordinance, what type of uses we're going to allow. And then, lastly, as I indicated, the goal would be, based on direction, come back to you at your November 29th special meeting with a summary of where you're at and continue your discussions. So, with that, that concludes the staff report. If there are any questions, we're all available to answer questions.
Just an initial question. So, after we give you any questions we have and open it up for public comment, did you want to go back and sort of lead a discussion about these issues with us, or do you have a certain list of questions you wanted to ask us?
I think it's really at the, whatever works best for the Planning Commission. Really, our goal was really to make sure we can confirm kind of the position of, we believe the Planning Commission has made on certain issues, so we could actually say, okay, that one's done, and then move on to the ones that are still open-ended.
Then, I would suggest we kind of go through them in the same order that you went through them, which is how you laid it out in the staff report in our packet, if that's okay, when we get to that part of the evening.
Sounds great.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Thank you very much for the summary. I thought you did a great job. I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. One had to do with micro businesses, and what we had heard, and it's, the question has to do with definition, and what we had heard was the existing medical marijuana operator talking about the need for that aspect of it or the recommendation of it because they create certain products. And the way that they were describing it seemed fairly innocuous. Can, so if you have a definition of that, that would be helpful. The second question that I had had to do with ITE standards for this type of uses, retail uses, regarding traffic generation and parking, because for the previous agenda item that we had at the last meeting, the staff report said there was no traffic impact. So, I'm just kind of curious about, what is the ITE standard, say, for parking and traffic? Those are my two questions.
So, for micro business, without going back, it had to meet three out of four categories, which was the manufacturing, retail, cultivation?
Distribution.
Oh, distribution, thank you. And the Council ruled out cultivation at one point when they were talking about micro business, so it would have to meet one of the three others. The Council concern at the time was that, for the micro business, it can be so broad unless you really narrow it down, and the Council felt it was too open-ended. And I think for the Planning Commission, when we come back in the 29th, our goal would be to provide more level of detail. So, for example, manufacturing, what exactly does that mean? Non-volatile, you can use non-volatile, what am I thinking, solvents, in terms of making the product, what that mean, what that means, and try to come back to more information. So, perhaps if you wanted to recommend, well, what have we limited, I'll make this up. What have we said? You can only manufacture X, Y, and Z, maybe packaging only, you can't distribute, you know, a limited amount of distribution, one truck, I don't know, 2,000 square feet, that kind of stuff. It's going to be somewhat complicated, but that's our goal, to come back with that type of information. And then, for ITE, and Ben might chime in, I'm not aware of ITE actually has a standard yet.
I'm not aware that they do either, but in our discussions about the potential for traffic and parking demand, which obviously is potentially an issue, the feeling was that we would try to, number one, you'd want to have a traffic study, and they would look at best-fit businesses in the area and try to get a sense. I have had discussions with industry people, and there are certain unique traffic patterns associated with this type of business. So, that's where you'd want to have professionals evaluating it, maybe looking at similar businesses in nearby areas, and looking at the unique characteristics of Marin, for example. If one were to open in Fairfax, it would likely be the only one in Marin, at least initially. So, what impacts might that have, et cetera. But, you know, a lot of that's just nuts and bolts, hey, calculate what you're going to be, what your peak demand is going to be, how that, how that traffic is going to be going in and out of the business, what about parking, stuff like that.
Any other questions from the Commission?
I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment regarding the multi, multi, I guess, unit parcels. Just because I'm trying to think of how this could impact adjacent residents. I think there was an example of like, what if you have a complex that has 50 units? And sometimes apartment buildings or condos, they have a common mechanical distribution system. And so, you know, how do you protect your neighbors, especially people who have allergies or sensitivities? I can also kind of see, don't want to be negative, but you know, somebody kind of taking over multiple units and not just growing for their personal use, but, or maybe paying people to cultivate for them. So, I just, I don't know. I think that's a complicated one, but I think maybe we can look at it in a number of ways, if possible, for the next meeting. Maybe if there's, is there a way to evaluate how many, how many complexes we have in Fairfax that maybe have more than 10 units? And, you know, just to kind of get a sense of what, if we really are to be concerned or not? So, and more than anything, just protecting the residents that are not growing for personal use. That's, I guess, a comment, question, what can we do to look at this more carefully? The, I guess, the other, again, clarification on the definition for manufacturing. I believe we were hearing a description of, you know, how benign manufacturing can be. It could be as simple as treating the product for pesticides, I'm not, or adding something to the product for safety reasons or for enhancement, but I think that term, yes. If we can get a very detailed definition of what that means, that would be great because I think we might be missing an opportunity if we eliminate manufacturing.
One consideration is, rather than eliminating it, simply holding that discussion in advance because in looking at it at a staff level, you know, there's such a huge because in looking at it at a staff level, you know, there's such a huge range of products out there, we've heard various people allude to them. And yes, we've also heard that something as simple as repackaging bulk product into individual servings, or, you know, cigarettes, would constitute manufacturing, that type of stuff. But one of the goals, I believe, is to try to get through as much of this as possible and have recommendations and, and ordinance proposed as soon as possible. And the feeling is that if we're going to delve into micro businesses and the various aspects of that, that that is by its nature a much more complex discussion and likely would take additional time. So if, if that's the commission's desire, we can do that. Otherwise, what we could do is concentrate on areas that are sort of more of focus as discussed by the commission and the council to date, and, and discuss the, the other aspects, micro business aspects, at a future meeting.
I'm sorry, were you talking about manufacturing as, within the context of micro business?
Well, yeah, I mean, both, yes. But specifically within micro businesses.
Okay.
And it's not an answer we have to have today, but I think for the, you know, future discussions, it would be good for me to be very clear on, you know, what, what that entails to make in order to recommend for or against.
Do you have questions?
One more question, thank you, Madam Chair. And I blanked. Okay, I remember now. In regards to the pre-application criteria, there's a reference to the San Rafael standards and requirements, but I didn't see them in our materials. Could we get that for the, our next meeting, please? Thank you.
An email would be fine.
And I have a couple of questions. The first is, you know, I saw that really the council has looked at the question of delivery, you know, because my initial thoughts were, we were going to look at retail, delivery, cultivation, and medical this month, hopefully get to some of the other questions later. But, you know, I see in the staff report, you're saying that the delivery isn't really something you want us to focus on tonight, because the council's sort of taken that up. But then I see the references throughout the staff report to delivery only. And I get confused, because there seem to be the use of the terms storefront and delivery only. And what we've just done is give a medical dispensary the authority to operate a delivery. Is that a delivery only, when there's a medical? Could you explain that and the use of the terms, because it's very confusing to me?
Okay. So, thank you, that was a good question. So it's, it's talk about the existing medical marijuana dispensary and what the council introduced for an ordinance. So what they did was, assuming that they do the second reading and it takes effect, they will allow the existing medical marijuana dispensary to make delivery onlys for adult use, meaning recreational marijuana. So they could do delivery of recreational marijuana. They're already allowed to do medical marijuana deliveries, although under a different set of standards. So that's a separate issue. But, so again, existing medical marijuana dispensaries would be allowed to make delivery only type businesses, meaning, delivery only of recreational marijuana, meaning that no storefront operation, no member from the public can go in and see the operation, do orders, or anything, that's all closed to the public, it'd be delivery only. I think for the staff recommendation, we were just referring to, we believe, the council seems to have just, for the delivery standards, so how you actually make a delivery, following those state standards. But the issue of delivery only businesses, adult use meaning recreational marijuana, that's still a subject of discussion for the planning commission to provide their recommendations to council.
And there's no inconsistency in the idea that there is a medical dispensary, which is a retail storefront medical brick-and-mortar store for cannabis, it has a delivery only component to it. I mean, the word only seems like it's meaningless.
Well, in this case, now, there is some issue of how much of a difference in product is there between medical and non-medical. I believe the operator, Lynette Shaw, spoke at the council meeting, indicated she thought there are only three types of products that separated medical from non-medical, and then all the rest were generally adult use recreational. But yes, the difference here is, the public could not go into the medical marijuana dispensary asking, can I see non, you know, can I order, I'm here because I don't have a medical ID or a card or a note, I'm here for recreational purposes. That member of the public could not be in that space.
But nothing's going to impact the ability of medical patients to walk into the retail dispensary and purchase cannabis products as a medical patient.
That's correct. Medical patients can still use the storefront operation.
Okay. I wanted to be clear about that. And so when we talk about the number of businesses, and, and this has been teed up as one of the issues that we need to, to discuss, is how many brick-and-mortar retail storefronts and/or delivery only businesses? And I don't understand the and/or idea. Does it, is there such a thing as a retail storefront slash delivery business? You know, which isn't the delivery only, but, delivery slash storefront?
Yeah, I think for the, maybe I should clarify, for, for the council, I think one of the things they were wondering is, within the limit, would be, should that limit include any type of retail operation, whether delivery only or storefront? So when I say storefront retail, I mean, someone can walk in, order, look at product, but they can also make deliveries. And storefront retail delivery, retail delivery only means no one can go in there and they would just make deliveries.
And so the issues that are still before the planning commission, in terms of delivery, in light of what the council has been doing, include the zoning-related aspects of our work here, right? Like where, what zones, and how many? Are there other aspects of these issues that are still sort of in front of us in terms of delivery?
I don't think so. I think really the question is, what type of business you want to allow, how many, and where can it be located? So I think it's what you just stated.
Okay.
Through the chair, for, to further clarify that, those questions, that line of questioning. Approval of the existing medical dispensaries' delivery only of recreational cannabis does not in any way pre-authorize a storefront retail delivery at that facility or to that licensee, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a confirming question? So I'm trying to think of a scenario, and just kind of recapping what you said. You could have, let me see if I can get this right. You can have an owner that has medical dispensary, brick-and-mortar, who is also licensed to deliver retail adult use in one location, but if they decide that they want a retail storefront for adult use, it's possible that that might be in a different location because of the radius, the buffer.
That's correct.
Okay.
If the planning commission could make a recommendation like that.
We can make a recommendation where they would be physically outside of, you know, well, yes, the buffer zone would have to be observed, and we could possibly ask to make that the standard. Okay.
Yeah, there's one other aspect of that also, is that currently in the dispensary's zoning district, the CL zone, you're not allowed to have retail storefronts. So that would be another adjustment that would have to be made, were you to pursue that.
And then in the staff report, the map that shows the commercial zones in yellow, I think I recall that it doesn't include Deer Park, since that would be way off the map and screw with the, with the size of what we're looking at, right?
That's correct.
Could we make sure to get maybe a second map with Deer Park at the next meeting? I'd like to actually see all the commercial zones that we're discussing reflected in these maps. You know, we kind of know where we're, we're talking about with Deer Park, obviously, but it's just, I think, better to have the full thing. Any other questions for staff before we open it for public comment? Great. So, yeah, we're moving, we have made good time here, guys. So I am going to open up the meeting for public comment. I'm going to ask Linda to make sure both you and I can see the three minutes. And so if you come up to the podium and turn the microphone on, when you see the red light, you'll know it's on. And if you can introduce yourself, if you like, and tell us if you're from Fairfax, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less, we'd all appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is George Bianchini, sixty-two-year Marin County resident, former owner and operator of Broadway Video for twenty-six years at Seven-Eleven Center. I'm now in the cannabis industry. I have two of the San Rafael licenses you referred to, also have a license in Novato, and industrial hemp operations in three states. I'm here speaking to the fact of, this has taken Fairfax way too long to get to this point. I realize sometimes these things are complicated. And we did have an election, November, excuse me, yeah, November eighth in two thousand and sixteen, I believe is what happened, and, and here we are still talking about locations and, and where things are going to go. I believe Fairfax was amongst the highest of the positive voting for the full Proposition sixty-four, which plainly put everything in front of the voters for well over a year that marijuana was going to be legalized, and it won overwhelmingly. If Fairfax continues on this slow path, you're going to end up with a public initiative like what happened in eleven different communities during this last election, and you will completely lose control based on Prop sixty-four. If a local community does not have any regulations in place, the state will take it over upon a public initiative. So I'm just hoping that Fairfax gets on with their planning. I liked the comment that was made about the six hundred feet for any additional stores coming in. I am familiar with Lynette's operation and have been, in fact, spoken her defense, I believe it was eleven years ago, when she got her delivery license for the medical. And when I spoke at that time, I had said, at that time, I had been in business for fourteen years. And I went to the chief of police and got the statistics. During that fourteen years, we had four police calls that resulted in arrests. Most of them were spazza abuse, based upon what they wanted to watch for their movie enjoyment. The bank was robbed, the deli was robbed, the grocery store was robbed, the church got broken into, White Hill got broken into, there was, the library was broken into. Basically, every, every retail establishment in town during those fourteen years had some sort of police participation, except for one. The Cannabis Club, to this date, has never had a police call. Why? Because there is no danger with cannabis. The recent study with Harvard puts cannabis safer than water. Water will kill you faster than cannabis. I know you're going to hear about all kinds of reports coming out, you can find them all over the internet, and most of them are by some of the Christian universities, stating all the bad things about cannabis. Some of it is real. Cannabis shouldn't be consumed by kids. Kids overdo things. Yet there still has never been one put in a body bag because of cannabis due to toxic poisoning. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Williams, I'm a longtime Fairfax resident, participant in West Marin Little League. And I'll keep my comments brief, I just jotted a few things down. It's funny, because I hear a lot about Prop sixty-four and how much it was supported by Fairfax residents, but if you actually go back and look at Yes On Sixty-four, there was a very significant focus on the protection of kids and the fact that this would actually work for the benefit of kids. And the Yes On Sixty-four campaign was even formally referred to as Californians, Californians to Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana While Protecting Our Children, was the exact language of their mandate. I'm only here about location. I voted for Prop sixty-four, I have no problem with having a storefront in Fairfax, it's just about having a storefront that's suitable, given where our kids congregate. And really, I'm, I'm concerned about a buffer zone, and the buffer zone applying to Central Field and Perry Park and the Pavilion. I, I think it's completely inappropriate to have a storefront recreational marijuana dispensary that close to those particular locations. And I look at the, the buffer zone, I think it's great, a thousand feet for consumption, six hundred feet for daycare centers, schools, and youth centers. My one little tidbit is that I think it should extend to playgrounds, so it's crystal clear that Central Field is also subject to the buffer zone. Lastly, I'd just like to say, I know there's been a number of folks that have gone up in front of, well, at least in front of the town council last week, as members of the board of West Marin Little League. But frankly, we're really here on behalf of all of the parents of the four hundred and fifty kids who play in that league. And if you want me to bring a petition with a signature from ninety-five percent of those parents, we can do that. So anyway, I'm really here for the kids, I just think we can find a suitable place for it, it just shouldn't be right next to Central Field. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrice Bryan. I live in Fairfax, I'm a registered voter here. I will not disclose my address due to privacy reasons. However, I am a national cannabis advocate. I am not connected to Marin Alliance, I am not connected to any single dispensary in this country, although I do represent them. All I want to say here is, let's stop fighting. Let's look at what we're looking at and the objective. I think that everyone here is saying, we don't mind having a dispensary. However, it's too close to the baseball field. If that's the issue, then you guys need to take it on yourselves, because you put that exclusion in your policy. It's too close to a baseball field. Truly, it is. I moved here from San Francisco, July first. We have a three-hundred-meter rule, that is well beyond three hundred meters. You need to allow Lynette a facility that's further away from the baseball field, and also, you need to allow competition. Competition is what's going to bring product that's quality to our town. I have to say right now, in all full disclosure, I don't shop at Marin dispensary, I go into the city, or I go into Sonoma. And the reason I do it is not because I don't have a medical card, but because I don't like the product on the shelf, and I don't want that in my lungs. So I want quality product, I want competition, and I want you guys to actually do your jobs, because every time I hear that we're going too fast, we voted on this last fall. It went in act January 1st. It is November, folks. Too fast? Seriously? Almost a year? You guys need to do your jobs. I will help you as much as I can as an advocate for the industry, but I'm actually really frustrated, living in this town, seeing that this town has always been the sin town. It's the beer town, it's the saloon town, it's got everything. Cannabis exists. It's not like we're pushing enough. Let's just find a way to make it work for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Deb Nelson, and I'm a 25-year resident in Fairfax. I served on the volunteer board for many years and was instrumental in leading the last Perry Park renovation. I care deeply about the character of the town and the people who live here. I'm also a psychologist who specializes in working with chronic pain patients. Most of my patients are 70 years or older, and I've seen time and again the benefits of medical marijuana. Also, I personally don't care if people choose to use marijuana recreationally, and I understand the majority of Fairfax voters voted in support of Prop 64. However, I'm against expansion of Marin Alliance's services. This is my second appearance here in front of the Planning Commission, and I spoke to the town council last week. In the previous meetings, the number of people opposed to expansion of services outnumbered the number of people speaking in support of expansion. Marin Alliance has been in its current location for many years. While there may have not been complaints about the business per se, there have been many complaints about people smoking weed and hanging out in the general area. I know, because I was one of them. I called the police to complain after someone at the ballfield offered my then-10-year-old son marijuana. I have friends who have complained to the town and to the police. You have a well-established love-youth sports program threatening to look for other fields. The problem is real, whether it's acknowledged or not. What is also real is the town is backing into an ordinance to help struggling individual business. This is a remarkable precedence the town is setting here, creating laws to help a struggling business with no widespread benefit to all residents. And finally, the fact is, there is no pressing need to provide marijuana to the community. My 70-year-old clients have absolutely no problem getting medical or recreational marijuana, legally or otherwise. I get that Prop 64 has passed, and contrary to a couple of tonight's speakers, I do appreciate the slow process. I believe the town needs a responsible, well-thought-out safeguards to protect the youth and the families here in town, and not just the needs of those who want to sell by marijuana. The process, in my opinion, has been out of balance and one-sided. Therefore, I'd like to see a provision that prohibits an expansion of Marin Alliance's services, and that the town of Fairfax maintains the state recommendation of 600-foot buffer zone. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Roselle Buick-Nardell, and the director of First Friends Montessori preschool. And in your previous meetings, most of the parents who have preschool kids are underrepresented, and tonight, we're here to request to the Fairfax Planning Commission that you uphold the 600-foot buffer zones around schools and daycare centers and parks. So we're all here, they can introduce themselves, but we're all here to connect to them.
My name is Tim Nardell, I'm Roselle's husband and the owner of the, the property at First Friends Montessori. I voted for Prop 64, and Prop 64 created a balance between the public interest in having this new industry allowed in California and protecting kids. Prop 64 wrote into the law a 600-foot buffer zone. You've, as a council, as a commission, as a staff, have taken a very careful look, and I'm listening to the staff proposal, it's a very careful look at how we work to conform with state law, and I was a little, I'm a little surprised by just the one aspect of the staff report, which says that the 600-foot buffer zone is voluntary. It's written into the law as the default. Other communities are going, bending over backwards to not allow cannabis, to not respect the rules under Prop 64. It would be a surprise for the voters and the people of Fairfax to see Fairfax bend over backwards the other direction, to decrease the protections that were written into the law, the balance that the election and the voters approved, which included a 600-foot buffer zone. Just because it says, as a little footnote, "Oh, but locals can do differently if they need to," that shouldn't be a, a way of breaking in and cutting out what the voters voted for, which was the 600-foot buffer zone, and that's what the people of Fairfax should have. There's a few special interests that want to have, there are special interests of having their products sold in the areas where they have their businesses, but that shouldn't outweigh the town's interest in protecting the buffer zone. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Annie Schaefer, I'm a mother that lives on Dominga, and a mother of preschool child that goes to First Friends. I would appreciate the upholding of the 600-foot buffer zone, not only as it impacts my family personally right now, but as it will do so for many generations to come. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Betsy Kelly, I was here a couple of meetings ago and spoke. I have two preschool children, one who is four and one who is three, both of whom attend First Friends Montessori preschool. And, you know, I voted for Prop 64, I don't, I really don't have any problem with anyone smoking pot, it's just fine with me. I really want to limit the impact that those choices have on my children now, and for a long time, for the next 15 years, they'll be here. And being next door to a retail pot dispensary when they go to school, or when they go to the ballpark, or when they go to play soccer, will impact them. It's not, it will have an impact on them. So I am asking that we uphold the 600-foot buffer zone, and my personal preference is that we restrict retail sales to delivery. But if we are to have a storefront, I think it's very important that we respect the 600-foot buffer zone. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gabe Robinson, I live here in Fairfax on Kent Avenue, I also have children at First Friends and also at Brookside. I would like to recommend that the, or advocate that the 600-foot buffer be upheld, but I also want to speak on something that's kind of been a little glossed over, I feel. It's the impact of traffic patterns related to cannabis businesses, be they medical or retail. I know that, I'm sorry, sorry, I don't know your name, but you, I can't read it from there, alluded to it, and that there is some unique patterns relating to that. I have the experience, while I'm not a longtime resident of Fairfax, but having lived in San Francisco for a number of years in neighborhoods that had multiple medical cannabis dispensaries, and seen the traffic and pedestrian impacts of that firsthand, I'd like to see that addressed before there's any sort of permitting process at all. I think that's just not been spoken to at length here, so, thank you.
Hello, my name is Rob Wentz, I am also a father of a, of a little boy who is going to First Friends Montessori School, and I also would like to see the 600-foot buffer zone withheld, upheld. And I don't have, don't want to go into too much length discussing this, but I think most of the points have been covered pretty well. But I think that the impact on our children, it's, it's, it's great. I did vote for, for Prop 64, I supported it, but I do believe that there should be a buffer zone between our children and the storefronts, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Josh Lafran, I'm a resident of Marin County my entire life, lived here in Fairfax, currently live in San Anselmo. I am a board member of West Marin Little League. And years ago, four or five years ago, I built a bathroom at Central Field, pretty much on my Sundays, to be able to have there for family, for town picnics, for things of that nature. Children were involved in that decision that I made. Actually, the reason I built it is because I watched a woman changing a child over a porta potty. And I had a hard time with it. And so I spent a lot of time with Garrett, with Mark, making decisions to have something like that at the field. The reason was for kids, and that was it. So, the bathroom has nothing to do with the dispensary, it has everything to do with the children. And so, I guess by me coming up here unanimously has, everybody has said that they would love you guys to highly consider the 600-foot buffer zone. I wish it was a lot further, to be honest with you. But the true reason why I wanted to come up here is my 12-year-old, who goes to White Hill, who is completely educated as far as what goes on in the drug world, and cannabis being one of, and so is alcohol, has a serious issue with it himself, and he wants to know physically why the town is pushing marijuana right next to our ballfield. That was his words last night, when I told him I was coming to this meeting, he said, "What is wrong with you adults? Don't you realize what you guys are doing to us kids?" That's a ballfield, that's a park, that's a place where us kids love to go hang out together. And just a 12-year-old alone, flat out told me, "I think it's time to consider the fact that there is a reason why there's a 600-foot buffer. Keep it away from schools, keep it away from parks, playgrounds, Perry Parks right here." Just speaking on behalf of my 12-year-old, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget Clark, and on, on the tail of that, I just want to, to mention that we appreciate you going cautiously on this, as families in the community. I have two teens, or actually a 20-year-old now, one at Drake High School still, and I don't think that the majority of people understand the effect of cannabis on youth in our community. We're considered high in California for use rate for 30-day use, which is considered regular use, 20% in California in general. In Marin, in the Tam High School District is 36%, at Drake High School, we're at 46%, and that's for 11th graders all the way up. So, we're considered high at 20%, we're here at Drake High School. So we've got a really big issue, and cannabis use disorder is a real public health issue that we're facing. On that note, I, I have done work with the county, and I want to encourage you to look at what they have done with their delivery ordinance, and to include, to follow their lead, and to include playgrounds and parks, because I think that those standards should be included in what you're looking at for the, for the ordinance. And also, I just thought I would mention that on the traffic, I reiterate, you know, I appreciate that there will be a traffic study done, because I, it will impact the town, as you, I'm sure we'll, we'll find out. It seems like a lot of money is being spent on, on reports and attorneys and things. I, I hope that it will, you know, be okay in the end. I personally would like to see it to be just delivery, if possible. And one other thing, just to mention the multi-use thing, having friends who use and family who have used for medical reasons, you know, I'm not against marijuana, but it is a very odorous plant, I can tell you from friends who grow, and plants in the backyard of a, of a house, I can smell it from the driveway. So in a multi-use setting, I would just caution you that, you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Carney, 32 Mountain View Road, 45-year resident Fairfax. My profession is to work with kids who are impacted by substances. I run the Marin County Youth Court. We have a real epidemic with children using substances, and I'm really, I'm really grateful that the Little League is here protecting the little ones. We have to protect the little ones, and we have to protect the teenagers. In the past six months, six of the kids I worked with had psychotic breaks on a high-level THC. We didn't legalize marijuana, what we did is we created a corporate THC industry that's out to make profits, and they really don't care what's going to happen to the kids. I don't think you ought to collude with the corporate THC industry. Nobody has a hard time getting marijuana. Middle school kids don't have a hard time getting marijuana. High school kids don't have a hard time getting marijuana. Adults don't have a hard time getting marijuana. We should not normalize it by giving it a location and colluding with the corporate THC industry. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Fernandez, and I want to start out by apologizing for when I was up here speaking last month and I didn't adhere to your time protocol, I apologize. So I'm going to make this really quick. I just wanted to address the products and also the facts around the risk, the health risks of cannabis. The National Academies of Sciences actually put out a report where they reviewed over 10,000 studies and articles related to cannabis, and there is some conclusive evidence, there's conclusive evidence to the benefits, some of the benefits of cannabis, it's clearly a very powerful medicine, but there's also some conclusive evidence also to the harms, and particularly with young-
Excuse me, can you please have some-
And I, I will provide, I actually, I will mail you the study, Patrice, I'll send that study to you if you give me your email, you're welcome. Okay, well, okay.
Excuse me, please, no interruptions.
No, you asked, but I will give it to you, and so, okay, I, my time's almost up. So anyways, I'll provide that to you, and I just want to say too, with the studies that they did do, hardly any of them were on the products that are out now, which have the really high THC levels, like up to 99%, the cannabis oils in particular. So while we do know that there are risks and harms, schizophrenia, addiction, cognitive impairment, particularly with youth, that's not even with some of the products that are out now, and I just want to stress, we have, this is a billion-dollar market, and, you know, they have people that are coming to these meetings trying to push it, because that, they're going to make money. And we don't know what we're bringing in, we don't know the impact it's going to have on kids or adults. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Doug Harning, I live at Mono here in Fairfax, and I'm all for the 600-foot radius, I'm biased on that, obviously, but the only thing I have to say is I'd like to see you guys streamline this as quickly as possible and just get her done, please, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rick Hamer, Polinas Road. I wasn't going to speak about this, but I was at the original meeting, the town council meeting. I think what we're facing here is the- I think what we're facing here is the extinction of the medical marijuana capability in Fairfax because of the competition of the corporate deliver, dispensaries. And I think leveling the playing field is the real mission here for the, for the commission. By that, I, I agree with the folks who have said restricting everyone to delivery and not having any retail. Because I would find it pretty hard to find a retail space which is further than 600 feet from any possible child abuse, or abuse to marketing it to a child. Simply, this town isn't that big, you know, and the retail spaces are kind of in a compact zone. So, I think in the interest of leveling the playing field, I would support the delivery restriction, or delivery only and no retail. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public care to speak?
My name is Beverly Brewster. I'm a Fairfax resident at 411 Cascade for nine years. And I'm also the pastor of Sleepy Hollow Presbyterian Church, and have a lot of my congregation living in Fairfax. And a lot of other of the youth and teens, because we have a huge youth ministry, congregate in Fairfax. So, I just want to say, you know, please resist any pressure to move swiftly. The people that are trying to get you to move swiftly are may have a lot of money in, you know, to make in this area. But I think that, you know, you, I am positive that you all know that your duty is to the safety of the town's residents and to preserving the character of the town. And, and, and one of the speakers earlier did say, you know, Fairfax is Sin City. Well, maybe it used to be, but now I think Fairfax is a, is a family-friendly town. And you walk down the streets of Fairfax and there's so many kids. It's just such a joy to me to see all the young families and the kids. And, and also kids from my church, the pre-teens and the teens, that are just really enjoying the town of Fairfax. I think that this town has just become such a wonderful, joyful place. And, and so, I really do just urge you to proceed deliberately and keep in mind the health and safety of our youth. And, and I myself, as a resident, would, would love it if we just had delivery only. But I especially think that the 600-foot buffer zone around all of the youth congregation, congregating, excuse me, places would really be the best for the town. So, thank you so much for your service to the town.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else here to speak on this matter. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for some discussion, and preferably- So, you know, when we started, it was about 7:15, and I said I wanted to do an hour plus public comment. So, we stopped at about 7:45, and we heard about a half an hour of public comment. I'd like to maybe see if we can do this part in 20 minutes. If we can, half an hour tops, okay?
Through the chair, can you clarify what it is we're hoping to accomplish here?
Sure. If you want to go to the staff report from our packet, on page two of the staff report, there is a list of a number of different items that Garrett reviewed with us in terms of discussing some of the key issues that we have yet to discover. A lot of these things we've already talked about. He's kind of already included the information he got from us at previous meetings, such as, you know, you can see continue to allow commercial medical cannabis dispensary, dispensaries. We were all in agreement on that. You see that 6-0?
No.
Okay. So, I think the idea is, and Garrett, I was thinking we would do this in the order they're here. If you want to do it in a different order, that's fine. But I would let you kind of run through each of the things with us unless you want me to do it.
It's really up, it's up to you. If it's more efficient, I do it, then that's fine.
Well, how do you guys feel about this? Michelle, do you have an opinion about how we best address these issues? Some of these are more important than others. I mean, obviously, we've heard a great deal from the public tonight about the buffer zone. I think retail, brick and mortar, is an important question. I think Norma looked at me as we were listening to public comment and asked me, "Are we doing retail, brick and mortar?" And I think that's the fundamental question. We've gotten some direction from the council about anywhere from 1 to 3. But we've also heard about, from the council, about the total number of delivery services they'd like. Obviously, we discussed tonight the idea that somebody could have a retail slash delivery service. So, I, you know, if you guys want to kind of weigh in on those, I think we've already talked about our preferences in terms of the numbers. Because we went through that exercise at our September meeting, if you may recall. So, I, I'm kind of thinking I'll let Garrett walk us through it. But if anybody has strong feelings, a different way of approaching this, I'm open.
Just for clarification, my other question was, are we going by the staff report? Or are we going by the matrix chart that we got from Garrett today? I think this summarized things a little more clearly than the staff report.
It does follow the same format, though. The numbers all match the numbers in the staff report.
Let me just get some feedback from Michelle.
Either way, I'm ready to summarize my position on all of the topics at once. If you want to have him walk us through it one at a time, whatever makes most sense.
I would suggest one at a time.
Okay, I like that idea too, because then we can kind of all weigh in on the same thing at, at once.
Okay, great. So, first, number one is what we called eliminated categories of use. That was where we said the PC was 6-0 in terms of supporting the council's direction to eliminate commercial manufacturing cannabis, commercial distribution of cannabis, commercial cannabis cultivation, and elimination of cannabis testing laboratories as categories, and putting off the discussion of microbusinesses until your November 29th meeting.
I think we're all still on board with that, right?
But, well, I would like clarification on manufacturing of cannabis.
Within the context of microbusiness, or as a separate category?
No, I think for both. Well, yes, for both. Yes, because I think it, one applies to the other.
Okay, that, all right. So, we, we can bring something back. It's going to broaden that discussion on the 29th, but okay. So, that would mean that the planning commission at this point is not eliminating manufacturing, commercial manufacturing cannabis as a category?
Not until we get more information on what it means.
Okay, so I think we have direction on item number one. Number two was eliminating cannabis temporary events. And it sounded like the PC confirmed the council's prohibition on cannabis temporary events. Oops. Number three was basically the confirmation the PC supported to continue to allow commercial medical cannabis dispensaries.
Doesn't sound like anything's changed since our last meeting. I mean, you know, the fact that you've got a 5 to 1 here and doesn't necessarily mean that that one vote, the ones that say 5 to 1, is changing.
My only preface to that is that earlier Garrett said that the existing medical marijuana ordinance allows three medical marijuana. So, depending upon what discussion we have on the retail, commercial side of things, we may, in the effort of streamlining, change that existing ordinance. So, I just want to keep that conversation open, in that context.
Allows three medical dispensaries. So, to include that in the, in the overall totals of retail, delivery-only, retail slash delivery, medical, retail, medical delivery, I'm sorry, adult use. Thank you.
The, another clarifying element to this that would be helpful is the- I've got it on. Okay, I'll speak into it. The three allowed medical cannabis dispensaries by ordinance are not allowed within the buffer zone with the exception of the existing dispensary that came in before all of these laws.
That, that's correct.
So, that, that would just might be a good thing to clarify.
Okay. And then to clarify for the council in their discussions, the only thing we pointed out was existing ordinance allows three medical marijuana dispensaries. But the council's intent was to come up with some overall number that included everything.
Yes.
So, are we on to number four, which is personal medical cultivation? Okay, on that one, the PC supports the council's direction, which is basically allow up to six cannabis plants be grown for whether it's medical or non-medical personal uses, no more than six plants per property. We indicated using the state definition, which is mature plant. We know we'll have to revise the medical marijuana cultivation ordinance that currently allows up to 18. But the issue was how to address multifamily units. One suggestion was just change it to six plants per residential unit, that addressed that. But then you have the issue of how do you handle the outdoors when it comes to multiplex, multi-unit, say apartment complexes where, say, you have like 10 units. Can everyone grow a plant outside? But we had pointed out the existing standards for outdoor cultivation. It has to do security screening, and you can't see it from the public right away. Maybe that just addresses the issue. But something for the planning commission to talk about, and the issue of balconies. And someone, I think from the public, had indicated the issue of odors. And right now, we go through the same issue when it comes to smoking. It's not allowed in 75% of the multifamily units with their complex, which is easy for apartments, but tougher for condos or townhouses because you own your unit, you may not all be in the same area. But it is a, it is something to take into consideration.
Can I-
Go ahead.
What is the state limit on indoor and outdoor, for personal or medical?
The state just says six. You could grow up to six plants indoor. It doesn't say anything about outdoor. So, you could technically ban outdoor if you wanted to.
It's for adult use or medical?
Right, right. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Just six, flat out?
I'm sorry, sir, but your laws are wrong.
Excuse me, can you, Ms. Bryan, I'm sorry, you're going to have to submit your information to the town planning staff. Thank you. Okay. So, on this one, you had asked Esther for additional information for our next meeting on the number of multiplex houses within the town so that we can look at that question a little bit more realistically in terms of what we're looking at. But do folks want to comment on that now?
Well, no, I just, I, I think maybe this is going to have to be folded into the standards. You know, if you do allow for personal growth in, in apartment, I guess, complexes, then maybe it trickles down to the design standards because I can see this impacting a lot of people. So, I'm not really sure that it's as simple as including it in, you know, to resolve it in that category. But I think that's a complicated one that maybe is going to require more beyond. And then, can I just ask a question for clarification? We're talking about revising medical cultivation ordinance, which allows up to 18 outdoor mature plants. Are we saying that we're revising it to be similar to the state and have it be six?
That's, that was the council's direction.
Okay.
No more than six indoor, outdoors combined.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Couple of, a couple of comments on this. I, we're talking about, on, in the first paragraph, we're talking about six plants per property, not six plants per housing unit on that property. And so, I also understand Commissioner Gonzalez's question about if we have an apartment complex with 20 or 40 units that starts, starts to multiply very quickly. And I'm, I might recommend taking a look at per-property limits, whether it be single or multifamily. And then, I believe there is an option. If someone, say, someone who needs medicinal marijuana, who needs to grow more plants, there's an option to come before the council or the commission to get some sort of an exception for medical conditions.
That exists now under cultivation ordinance. But I think the council's thought was just to make these consistent. So, they may, we didn't go to that level of detail, but sure, you could have exceptions.
I would, I would, I would recommend a per-property limit. And I, and I do have concerns about balconies and also would like to see our existing standards continued in terms of screening from the street and excessive odors.
I'm in agreement with both of you on the property idea and that I was the dissenting vote on outdoor cultivation. I did not want to allow outdoor cultivation at all. So, I would still be leaning in that, that direction. I guess additionally, some of the thinking I was having was that there needed to be odor control filtration, some kind of ventilation systems, and that any lighting, because they're heavily into lighting, and any lighting, plumbing, and electrical would need to meet existing codes. If there was any construction that occurred, that, that they needed to be legally constructed, that there be full-time occupancy requirement, that there be consent of the property owner, that the primary use on the property be residential, meaning that it's got to have functional cooking and bathroom and sleep facilities, that that's the primary use, and that this is a secondary use. And I think that we shouldn't have any access, you know, some level of security measures where children are allowed to get into it if it's going to be an outdoor cultivation. And of course, the prohibition of volatile solvents and non-flammability and toxic chemicals and that kind of thing.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, so I am, I guess I'm concerned about the limits. But given that the town council is directing us to limit them to up to six, whether indoor and out, I do also agree that for the indoor, you know, and outdoor, to the extent necessary, it would be, you'd have to have all the lighting and plumbing and electrical to code. I think the control of odors is not as significant as some of the rest of you think. And I think that excessive is too vague a term. I, I think that you could really get into a slippery slope of trying to determine whose pot plant is excessively stinky and whose isn't. So, I wouldn't want to go there in terms of cultivation. I'd agree with the, keeping the screening. I think I'm on the fence right now in terms of the per parcel. I think I feel better that we do have a process for seeking specific permission. I think we should explore that so that if there were multi-units and an application could be made, an exception could be made to a limit on the per parcel, to a per unit, depending on the circumstances, hardship, et cetera. I also think that the existing screening standards are adequate. So, I wouldn't go further beyond them.
So category number five had to do with allowing cannabis deliveries in town, including from retailers located outside the town limits. A PC supported the council position, which was continue to allow deliveries. And I think as we had pointed out as staff, that we believe the council in its discussion of the business permit process really indicated just, when it comes to the actual delivery process, in terms of delivery standards, we're just following the state regulations.
Point of clarification, if I may. The bullet reads, "The council recently discussed business permit process for delivery-only operations," in plural, which in essence require compliance with state regulations, but should we refer here to the full language of delivery-only operation for any existing dispensary as of a certain date?
Sure, we could.
Because
Sure, that's what it's meaning.
This could be interpreted as operations in general, it could be another besides an existing.
I think that's fine. I think the, I think for the staff report, I think what it probably should have just said is, when it comes to actually standards for delivery, we're really relying on the state standards, so perhaps there isn't a need at this time to go in, for the planning commission or council to actually go through individually and create your own delivery standards, regardless of the operation.
I don't know that we have more comments on that one.
Okay. So, and now number six, obviously is the category, is what we're talking about, is really allowing some form of non-medical cannabis retail, and if so, what type and what should be the actual number, and that's really the key policy discussion. Certain number of factors to think about that can maybe narrow down to parameters and within that, that may actually help you with your locational discussion of where it can be. So it's kind of a, as I call it, it kind of depends where you're going. If you decide you want to maintain the state buffer zone, then you know you only have pretty much areas off of center between Pacheco and Pastore. Then within that, you can either say, okay, pick a magic number, or say, you know, create some other standards, in which case, then you know, limit it even further, because there aren't that very many properties there to start with that could meet maybe all the standards that you set.
This might be a good time to ask about the formula business standard, you know, how that implicates the zones and that, or not, for retail.
Yeah, the formula business provisions in our town code are in chapter 17040, and it's starting with 210. And I think the key aspects of that is, well, you could say the purpose, and, you know, there's various aspects, ensure service of local demand for goods, provide a diverse mix of businesses, preserve opportunities for owner-operator businesses, maintain the town's unique village character. When you get into the actual definition, and this is kind of the meat of it, when you start to apply restrictions and enhanced findings, it says, "Formula business, any business that is required by a corporate headquarters or franchise or other arrangement to maintain any of the following: standardized services, decor, uniforms, architecture, signs, or similar features. This shall include but not be limited to any retail, sales, service, visitor accommodation, wholesale or industrial operation, et cetera." And then when you get into the conditional use, I think one of the, the key provisions, findings that the commission would need to make is found in 17040220C, and I'll just read it. "The proposed formula business or restaurant will provide services or product which complement existing businesses in the zoning district in which it is proposed to operate, considering the existence of and proximity to the same or similar businesses within that zone, and will not have a significant adverse financial impact to the same or similar businesses within that zone." So what this potentially affects or discusses is the idea that if you're gonna have more than one business, and we're all hearing about the potential for chain businesses, we know that that's very typical in other areas already, other states, that if those people were to come into this town, and indeed, they're not strictly speaking prohibited, that they be designed and approved in such a way that they did not adversely impact previously existing businesses. So there's two aspects, is, you know, what defines a formula business, and there's all this, you know, do they wear uniforms kind of stuff? And then you get to, how do we evaluate the characteristics of that business such that they do not adversely impact what may be an existing local business? And just as an example, if a local business already has a delivery service, maybe if we're considering adult-use retail storefront, we would say, you can't have a delivery service. You know, that would be an example of how to say, it's not gonna be directly competing with it. Then again, there may be some feeling that competition is good, but that's sort of the gist of it. You're welcome to read it, or if you have questions about that, but that's, in evaluating that, those provisions in our town code, that's, those were some of the salient factors.
And that applies to CC and CH?
Correct.
And CL?
Well, CL doesn't have retail right now, so if we were to adjust
So CC and CH, period. If we were to decide that delivery could be in CL, it would not be subject to the franchise, to the
Formula
Formula business?
Well, that would be a question brought before your commission, is do you want to apply the same sort of formula business restrictions in the CL zone? It might make sense if you're gonna have some of these commercial businesses to say, and it's something deemed important by the town, and obviously Fairfax has passed this, these provisions, on that you would expand it to say, to, to apply to a CL in that context.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was that code number, please?
You mean, it starts with 17040200.
Thank you.
And it's basically like a page and a quarter.
So do, we want to just kind of go one by one and talk about where we are at in terms of the big picture, like, hey, we're talking about different numbers for delivery, different numbers for retail storefront, different numbers for maybe a combination of the two, and the buffer zone. Esther, do you want to start?
Well, let's start with the buffer zone. I, I think it needs to be respected for all new businesses. In terms of the number and how to, I guess categorize them, I keep thinking two to three, but I'm thinking about somebody who might have a micro license, micro-business license, that, I guess I'm thinking, okay, somebody could have delivery, retail, and manufacturing, right? That could be counted as one, conceivably, so then I'm thinking, if somebody else comes in and just wants retail, that would be two. But if, you know, so I'm just trying to think about how many businesses do we want versus how many, I'm thinking three max, but I think I'm still kind of working through the numbers in terms of the combinations, because if we do have micro-business licenses, that would limit the number of companies, but if you don't, then you might have a lot of, I don't know, it seems like we lose control. So I, I'm still kind of grappling with that, the number, but I keep thinking three is probably max for whatever it is that we end up doing.
Can I go next? Okay. In terms of the buffer zone, I think we should adhere to the state's buffer zone for any new businesses. In terms of the formula business regulations, I think the town has spent a lot of time in putting those together, and it has worked extremely well in helping us to maintain the, the character that everyone loves in Fairfax, and I would like to see that continued with any, any potential, any new business, whether it's cannabis or, or anything. And in terms of the number, I'm, my opinion has shifted somewhat. I used to think possibly, I used to think three was a good number, and now I, I wonder, and I'm not, I'm not so sure about that. I'm, I'm leaning towards one, or maybe two, but possibly not three. It's, it's not a business that would necessarily enhance our downtown and our, and our commercial economic vitality in, in this town, and it's like you have one bar, that's okay, you got two bars, okay, that's maybe better, but you have three, four, five bars, and at some point, it's just enough. So definitely maintain the formula business regulations, maintain the state buffer zone, and I'm still thinking about the numbers.
Can I ask a question, just a follow-up question? Can we limit the number of businesses? So we can say three businesses and you have the option to do X, Y, and Z up to this limit?
Or we can limit by zone.
By zone? Because if, if we said three businesses, that would, I think that's kind of what I'm trying to get my head around, is I don't want all these businesses personally taking away from, you know, something that would create diversity or take away from an existing business. So I think the competition, for me, you know, still, I think three might be okay for me, just in terms of creating competition, but I think maybe the focus should be the number of businesses versus the number of, I guess, categories.
Michelle?
I'm sorry, I, I do like the idea of restricting them to particular zones, to the commercial zone, restricting it fairly exclusively to the commercial zone.
What do you mean by that? We got CCC, CH, and CL.
I, I would tend to think along Sir Francis Drake. A commercial zone, preferably on a, a second floor or a back, back area of a building. I don't, I don't, I don't believe that a, a retail cannabis business would be a, an enhancement to our downtown and our economy, or, and our character.
Okay, so one of the questions I have for you, Norma, is I don't understand, if you look at the maps that we have at the back of our packet, one has the buffer zones drawn on it, and the other one that staff provided just shows the commercial central, the highway commercial and CL zones without including the Deer Park area. And, you know, when I look at, what I heard you say was, you're not opposed to having it in the commercial zones, but when you look at the one with the buffer, you see that most of those commercial zones, if you look at the other one, most of those commercial zones are not included. So I, I'm just curious, when you say, oh, you wouldn't mind it along Sir Francis Drake, I mean, that was my point, was I, I don't mind the buffer zone, but I'm not necessarily sure. I think it should cross Sir Francis Drake. I don't think it should prohibit businesses along Sir Francis Drake or along center in that downtown area from necessarily being a business. And I, I guess I fundamentally disagree about whether this is gonna enhance our downtown. Do you have a, an answer, or shall I ask Michelle her thoughts before we go on?
Go ahead and ask Michelle.
Okay.
So I feel like we've already got a medical, we've got a delivery, and I'm not sure of, given the size of the community, that we need anything more. If we were, and the reason why I say that is because of, I lack context. If one is to be allowed, I would think it would have to be in the CH zone, except for, we heard people talk this evening about First Friends Montessori, and on this buffer zone map, it shows schools, preschool, and youth centers, but I thought First Friends Montessori was right behind this, so I didn't know if they're just excluded, because aren't they right here?
This is right.
Oh, they're here.
That's their buffer.
Okay, so, so, okay, because I walk by that, yeah, alley with my dog. So I think the CH would be fine, and I actually might be even open to the other side of Sir Francis Drake and a limited portion of CC along Sir Francis Drake, potentially, but I want to maintain the buffer zones from the state. The context that I lack is I want to even restrict size of building. If they're local serving, and I felt like I needed more information on traffic and circulation patterns that people were bringing up this evening that I, I felt like I didn't have information on, because when I think of retail, I think of, well, what happens if whole, what happens if a large grocery store closes and that becomes, that's not what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about a very small, local-serving retailer. If it's not that, then I think we're too small, and I would not really support it. But I do support the buffers, maintaining the buffers.
I agree with Michelle.
Okay, I'm gonna call it a night on this subject, and let's continue this discussion at the next meeting, because I think I've gone over the time, I had allotted for this, and I don't want to All right, quickly, please.
Okay. I'm not sure where this would fall, if it would be within design standards, but I, I really would like to see some kind of requirement to develop youth education, prevention, treatment programs. How that's funded is, you know, to be determined. I would like to see mechanical ventilation standards for filtration, and then security. I think security, and also waste management. So four things that I, I think we really, I don't know if that's a second level of development, maybe not for our immediate goals, but I want to make sure that those are addressed somewhere down the line.
Okay, thanks. And thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. We really appreciate everybody's input and the time and passion you guys have, have given us here. Thanks. And yeah, I apologize to those of you sitting here waiting for your planning items, but we're gonna take a little five-minute break here. Thanks. Okay, we are gonna bring this back to order here and move on with our next item, which is the expansion of the existing restaurant at 1914 Sir Francis Drake, and Linda?
Okay, the applicant was proposing to expand the existing restaurant at 1912 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard Lotus Cafe into the adjacent vacant 575-square-foot commercial space at 1914 Sir Francis Drake. That was previously a hair salon. No changes are proposed to the front of the building except to make inoperable the existing entry door to 1914 Sir Francis Drake. The proposal includes the addition of a 41-square-foot utility room and an 80-square-foot refrigeration room at the rear of the building. The proposed commercial floor area would increase by 131 square feet from 1,321 to 1,452 square feet. The increased floor area would be for service area as a proposed AD
The increased floor area would be for service area as a proposed ADA accessible restroom and enhanced kitchen preparation area and an enclosed walk-in cooler and then there would be additional seating in the front portion. No setbacks are required in the central commercial zone district except where a commercially zoned property abuts a residentially zoned property. This property does not abut a residential zone. The commercial space at Barefoot Cafe wraps around, there are residential uses back there, but it's not zoned residential, so there's no required setbacks. Thus, no variances are being requested. The project does require design review for the addition at the rear and for the, um, changing the front door at 1914 to a fixed window, but staff does not feel that those changes, uh, make any significant modifications to the exterior appearance of the building, so we can make the findings, um, that it complies with the design review criteria. We have included a condition that the materials and colors of the addition at the rear and the window framing at the front of the new, the new use area shall complement the exterior design of the existing building. Uh, the project, as with many of our proposals for reuse of existing buildings downtown, does require a parking variance, um, because this, these are, the interior lots that have building along their entire free str- street frontage, there's no possibility to provide any additional parking, so it's pretty standard for the commission to grant parking variances for the reuse and minor expansion of existing commercial buildings. Uh, you can consider conditioning the project upon the owner signing a recorded agreement indicating that he will support any no net loss parking plan that's developed in the future, which that's called for in your general plan, that there would at some point be a comprehensive parking study done of the downtown and maybe some kind of a shared parking agreement developed. Um, the restaurant expansion is not expected to generate a substantial increase in the need for parking spaces beyond, beyond the parking demand that was generated by the previous hair salon. And of course, it will provide a more roomy dining area for its existing customers. Uh, staff did have a little bit of concern about the additional refrigeration.
Can you hold on just a second, Linda? Excuse me, uh, folks in the back of the room, um, we're a little bit distracted by your conversation, maybe you could take it elsewhere. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so even though there's no residential zoned properties that, adjacent to the site, there are residential uses to the north and east, so we just aren't sure exactly how much no- noise will be generated from the new refrigeration units once they're enclosed by a wall. So we feel that a qualified engineer is appropriate to make such a determination and if no, noise levels exceed the noise ordinance, um, make recommendations for sound attenuation measures. The, the enclosure may take care of the noise issues. There already are refrigeration units back there that are enclosed in a room and we haven't had any noise complaints from the adjacent residents. So based on our ability to, uh, make recommended findings for approval, we're recommending that you approve the project by adopting resolution number 2018-19, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the commission have a question for staff?
I have two, um, questions. One is, is there some type of a specific plan or historic character that might relate to the front of this building? In other words, it's an all white building. Should there be some trim or some, some, something that matches some specific plan or something?
We don't have any specific plan for the downtown right now. It's talked about in the general plan, but the town hasn't accomplished that yet.
And is the whole facade of that physical building, not just where this unit is, but it looks as if it's, is it all white, all the way down?
Mm-hmm.
It is. Okay. Then I wanted to ask you about the traffic study. So, so this expansion of area is adding, uh, is it 24 or 26 seats?
I wanted to say 26, but I can count again.
Okay, so it's okay. So 26 seats and the previous salon, then you're thinking had the potential of 26 people seated at the same time, right? Because what, what, what concluding? I just want to understand what we're concluding and I think what...
So what I was trying to say is that right now, they only have, they have maybe, maybe six seats in there and so what I think happens now is that people come, they take, they buy their food, they take it out, but they're still parking there to pick up their takeout food, right? And so the, the traffic engineers have analyzed the number of seats that were in the hair salon and, and determined that it's not subject to our traffic impact permit ordinance and our town engineer has agreed, so it's not subject to that. I don't, I don't believe that the, that the expansion really has the potential to start drawing more people from other communities to come here. I think it's gonna serve the same people that go there now. I think they're just going to sit and eat there instead of ha- ta- doing takeout, because there's so limited seating there now.
Okay. I guess when we talk about this, I'll talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand the same kind of area. When they talk about 28 net new, it's average daily trips, so that, the trips don't necessarily equal parking spaces? Okay, so it's a separate metric.
They're separate issues.
Okay.
Yeah, and the average daily trips, I always have to remind myself, it's not average daily trips, it's average daily trips, averaged, uh, occurring, crossing a s- I better read it to you.
Okay.
Cause it's not as simple as, are there gonna be 100 more trips coming to that business?
Right.
It's a little more complicated, so hang on a second, let me just find it. It's traffic engineer speak. Yeah, so average daily traffic is the total volume of traffic crossing a fixed point, for example, the boundary of a project over a 24 hour period averaged over some period of time. So you're averaging in the ti- times of day when no one's coming? You know, you're averaging weekends that are probably very busy?
But that's not cars going to the business, but just driving down the street past the business?
No, it's, it's trips being generated by this business. But I don't pretend to be a traffic engineer, but I, I will reiterate that the applicant's traffic engineer said that presented information that showed that it was not subject to our traffic impact permit and then our town engineer provided a peer review and agreed. So I, I don't believe it's an issue. You've had two separate traffic engineers look at the issue.
Can you explain again the condition of possibly, um, sharing parking? Uh, you were saying that maybe that's something that could be added in as a condition for the future if it becomes a problem?
So we, we did this with 31 Bellinas when they wanted to expand, because there's no way for any, a lot of our businesses to create more parking, but there is this dream in Fairfax and it's talked about in the general plan, that maybe someday, someday our private lots and our public lots will all be covered by some master parking plan where all the benefits, all the businesses will benefit from all the parking, right? We're just, and we put a condition on 31 Bellinas when they expanded, just making them sign an agreement that they will not fight any kind of, uh, uh, shared parking plan that ends up being adopted by the town. For a business like this that doesn't have any parking, I can't imagine them fighting something like that. It was, it made a little more sense for 31 Bellinas that has its own parking spaces and might want to restrict it to only their businesses.
Okay. So it just...
It just says that they have to stay open to that option.
Right, and, and I don't know what the parking plan will entail. You know, there might be some money, people might donate for the upkeep of the shared parking, that would be part of the agreement that they not, that they agree to participate in anything that that parking plan, you know, entails. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, uh, and I understand the applicant is here? Good evening. Thank you for being patient and waiting through the beginning of our meeting.
Thank you so much.
Uh, does anyone have questions for the applicant?
I actually have the contractor here too, so if there is any, uh, complicated question, he's been waiting with his kid from six o'clock or six thirty, so he's available.
Okay, great.
Uh, I would like to hear a little bit about, uh, your clientele and where your range of services.
We've been in Fairfax almost eight years, eight or nine years ago and our, our driving force is basically is a sustainable, sustainability, organic, non-GMO and we have a lot of customer come, they used to come to the Lourdes in the main in San Rafael. The people who lived here are majority of the businesses to go, because the, the sm- uh, the space is very small. So given time, if you come now there, it's about 10 seating. So everybody actually waiting out there to pick up and go. So they park, even they park right in front of the, the Paris Deli or there's a space in between, they park and go. So our, I don't know where I'm going with my answer, but we need to expand to serve a better to the community, because we see people waiting outside in the winter, which is not fair to the customer. That's what I, that's what I think.
I, I just want to say that I'm very happy that you're expanding, um, because I often go by there thinking I want to go eat, but it's packed.
Thank you.
And so, uh, and so sometimes I do go to San Rafael because of that.
Thank you.
And I would rather come to your store.
Yeah, I, I think we have a problem on the weekends and I think the weekend is the biggest issue right now, because I, when I come to help them from the main restaurant to here, and people are actually lining, lining up in between while the customers are eating, and I don't think we're doing fully justice to the community, that people are waiting or they're waiting...
Yes.
Further when you're trying to go to the bathroom and we are actually adding a additional bathroom, which is not required. So we done all the permits and everything by the health department and we allocate them more water, we done whatever we need to do, so this is the final step.
Yeah. I, I think it's very good. I am very supportive of this...
Thank you.
...project. I, I did have a question, this is a technical question that I'm sure is gonna be handled by the health department. I just, I was curious, because I noticed that your ice machine was right next to the mop sink.
Well, that's coming back in, because there was no space, so we've been, we've been fighting, we spent, about two years ago, we spent about a quarter million dollars putting the patio back in there and in order to put the patio back there, we have to put a fire sprinkle back there, we have to do much different thing. That's why I was making a logic to buy the building, so we own the building now, to buy the, uh, hair salon out, so we can expand and we put things in, in, in closer.
Right.
So I know that's why it's there, that's why it was there.
Well, yes, and I understand you've got a utility closet or room. I'm just talking about the proximity of the ice machine next to the mop sink, because it, I just noticed that.
Tony can answer, Tony is the contractor, I, I don't know, I just, I seen you do over the pla- project, but he's the man who does everything for me. Tony, you want to come up?
He can come up.
Linda, that's something that's gonna be handled by the health department.
They've gotten all their health department approvals.
Yeah, so this...
Health department has already approved, so we're just waiting for, um, the mercy of Fairfax.
Okay. No, I mean, that's not, that's not gonna hold up the project. I was just, you know, curious, just cause when I noticed it, I thought, oh, that's awfully close.
I'm not knowing much of the detail, I think that's why I had Tony here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Have a good...
Go ahead.
I also don't have a question for you, but, uh, I have been waiting for many years for you to be able to expand into the next door, uh, business. I think it will be a wonderful addition to the downtown and, uh, you certainly will see me and my family there more often, because many times it's just too busy or you have to take it home to eat and it would be lovely to sit there.
Also, we see the overflow from here to going in San Rafael back, so if there's a family of four or five, they can't continue long waiting, then they end up going there and if we are busy, they end up coming back again, so it's not a, it's not very convenient.
That's right, and you're an organic and sustainable business and, uh, extremely healthy and, and a, a dedicated supporter of our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, um, and I'll, uh, open up the hearing now for any members of the public who would like to speak on this item.
Hi, my name is, uh, Tony Chang, so I'm the general contractor and I also help with the design of the plans. Uh, so I want to answer, uh, the first question about the mop sink first. So it's a very tight location, so we, uh, the previous ice machine was actually in the back and it was actually not allowed in that such a way from the health department. So what we've done, we put it in the enclosed area and we will separate that, uh, ice machine from the mop sink per a wall. Yeah, so there will be a wall separating the two, so there will be no cross contamination.
Okay, yes, cause I noticed that you infilled a wall...
That's correct.
...to create that space and I thought, why did they remove that? They could have isolated the mop sink and now it's all open to the same room.
Right, we actually do need a separation for the mop sink, also to hang shelves and also the mop rack and so forth.
Okay, okay, well, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that.
Thanks.
I won't be thinking about that when I'm eating.
Um, I also want to answer the other question regarding noise on the, on the, uh, walk-in compressors. So the compressor will actually be located on the ground next to the ice, next to the walk-in cooler, uh, in a, uh, as opposed to maybe on the roof or something like that. And it is a, a scroll compressor, so it's actually quite, very quiet. It doesn't, it's not the, those are very loud ones, um, it's actually just like a, like a, it's, it's much quieter, yeah, it's a scroll compressor. So on a noise factor, uh, we are only introducing like a new AC on the, on the roof for the new section and nothing else, so. Uh, any other questions, maybe for me?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Yes, okay.
Good evening, we're at Camer Bellinas Road. Um, I like the restaurant too, I'm supportive of this, but I do need to make a point, um, parking in recent years in Fairfax has been pretty much over the top. People are creating spots right and left and red and yellow zones, uh, and that this particular project, uh, will, by the looks of the plans, add at least five vehicles in those 20 some odd seats that people are now gonna sit down. They would be five parking spots. And, um, I just want to make a point about, um, uh, special privilege here, because we do have some other projects that, um, are, uh, would love parking and might, uh, have a problem complying with the parking portion of the code. Uh, when I look back and his, historically, uh, since parking has gotten pretty bad, at least when we had a business here, uh, most businesses have onsite parking, Split Rock Restaurant onsite, Way Station onsite, they had to pay for this, but, uh, real estate. Mas Amas, 31 Bellinas, onsite parking, 19 Broadway, they had, uh, Casa Manana come in, they had to comply with onsite parking. The other businesses were existing businesses. Uh, Tamil used to be Sleeping Lady, so not a problem there. Village Saki used to be the Chinese restaurant, not a problem there. Village Saki currently has an expansion in progress. They're going to add more seats, which is like opening a new restaurant. Uh, so by granting, um, Lotus a, uh, an approval here, um, in order to avoid special privilege on Village Saki and, and others to follow, it's pretty much saying that you're going to be granting this forward, which of course will affect parking. So I know there's ways, ways to mitigate this, uh, like staff has said, but I just do really want to make a point that special privilege is special privilege and needs to be extended all the way across the other businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you turn the mic off? I think you may be our last public speaker on that item. Thanks. Uh, so seeing nobody else speaking on this item, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Uh, Michelle, do you want to start? Michelle, do you want to start? You had some thoughts about the parking?
It was more about the, sorry, they... I'm in support of the restaurant doing the expansion. I believe that they are local serving, and I think that, I appreciate his, his business philosophy. I, I do believe that the type of business that he's expanding into, the previous business, the hair salon, had different peak period times, and different parking requirements, and less overall. There would have been less hair stations than seats, than proposed seats, and their peak times would have been more during the day than at dinnertime. And the number of people being able to sit here, and thus parking, is going to be greater than the previous use. So although the staff conclusion was that, well, because of the traffic report, that it was not going to be substantial, it, it does concern me a bit, and that was all I wanted to say about it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
You know, I do support this project, but I, that was my concern as well when I was looking at this, is people are going to come now and stay longer. You know, the people that were coming to take out are now going to sit there and maybe be there an hour. What are the options? I mean, I, I don't know, you deal with this a lot. Between, between the restaurant and like Fairfax Market, there's all that extra parking. I mean, trying to figure out if, if that's like, you know, parking, shared parking.
Well, that's what the town ultimately would like to see, but for these business, for these buildings that were built in the 1920s, when there, people were coming on the train, they're built property line to property line, there is no way for them to provide parking, short of jacking the building up and trying to put parking underneath. And so, you know, if you went back through the history, the number of parking variances that have been allowed to allow, you know, businesses that aren't generating hundreds, the need for hundreds of parking spaces to use these small hole-in-the-wall businesses really are not very big. They've been granted routinely the entire time I've been here. Because otherwise, you run into a situation where people have trouble renting their spaces out, you know, if they can't find a use, because the use is going to generate a little bit more parking than what was there before, and they have to provide parking, but there's no way to do it. It's, um...
So it's, it's a site constraint issue, there, there, basically, there is no room for parking, unless, like you said, if you jack up the building, which then it becomes a hardship.
Yeah, and the businesses that, that the gentleman mentioned, they're the businesses that already have vacant land for parking. Fairfax Inwentin, it was required to put its rooms up above and keep the ground for parking, it was parking before, they took down a residential building. This property does not have that option, there's no way to access the rear with vehicles.
Right.
Right? So it's...
It's one thing to have parking and take it away, it's another thing to try to create something that was never there.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would encourage, you know, I, I, I'm not going to reject the project because of this, I would encourage the owner, Paul Sroa, to maybe talk to, you know, the adjacent businesses, especially on the weekends, you know, having some kind of shared parking agreement when they're closed. Yes, no, and I, I don't know if he's allowed to respond to that.
No, he's not, I'm not going to let him respond to it.
No, I, so I would just encourage you, for your patrons, to kind of come up with a solution, especially during the peak hours on the weekends, when I think you're going to see growth, because, you know, the people that have kind of come and thought twice are probably going to come and sit, you know, for a nice meal.
Well, I, I want to weigh in here, because I kind of see it a little bit differently, and see how you guys feel about this, because I do have concerns about granting special privileges, although I totally agree with what Linda's saying about this particular business, and there's no place to put parking, I just don't think it's reasonable. However, I also think one of the, the really key physical characteristics of this particular property is that it is directly across from the bus stop. And to the point that, you know, I've got you on speed dial, so when I get off the bus, I can just walk right in, pick it up, and walk home. That's no trip, that's a zero parking. And I think we could add that to the resolution as one of the findings, that because of its immediate proximity to the, to public transportation, and in fact, the biggest bus stop we got in this town, that that's another factor in terms of granting the parking variance.
Yeah, if, also, one thing to keep in mind too, is your downtown cores typically are versus conventional IT standards underparked. And the idea being is that eventually you get a master parking program, you develop potentially additional parking spaces, it's shared parking, you, you figure out which businesses are using it when, and everybody contributes towards that, and this is part of waiving any opposition or challenges. If we develop that program, and we come up with a levy, they will be part of that. But other jurisdictions have done this successfully, Larkspur, Carmel by the Sea, where I worked. So it's one of those things where you just don't want to turn your downtown over to parking. So yes, by standards, it is in short supply, there is a hassle with that, there's a bunch of different ways you can do traffic demand and parking demand, but ultimately, the question is, as has been pointed out, when you have existing businesses that occupy the lot, you know, are you going to basically say, oh, this is likely to generate some additional demand for parking and some additional traffic? Or do you just acknowledge that the ultimate solution is going to have to be a, a community solution? Hopefully, we'll get there, and in the meantime, you're not discouraging successful businesses that do serve the local community. I mean, one of the things I, I think with this business is, a lot of people just walk there. I mean, that's the great thing about downtown Fairfax, is, you know, there's any number of businesses that have zero parking, and they're busy, and somehow it works.
Also, there are a number of shared parking opportunities, I think, if we look at the bike museum, and the garage next door, and then the other bike shop, there's always parking available there, day and night. And so, that's a half a block up. So I, I am not concerned, I don't consider it a grant of special privilege.
Would you mind adding some language in the... Oh, it is there? All right, what are you looking at?
Variance for waiver of...
Granting a variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege, as most properties in the vicinity are similarly configured, such that off-site parking cannot be reasonably obtained. And I would add, and there is, and the property is located in the immediate proximity of public transit stop.
Not only a public transit stop, but a large public parking space directly across the street, a parking parcade.
I also think if we're adding to the conditions of approval that he mentioned, they're putting a roof-mounted, the contractor did, air system, and Linda has on 8A referencing the anticipated noise from the refrigeration unit adding the roof-mounted HVAC system, that gives her an opportunity to get the details on that, that's not shown on the plans. And I just wonder whether other people feel like, since they're not shown on the plans, do we care if it's visible from the right-of-way, or is, is it, should we say that it's below the parapet, or are we only worried about noise? Well, no, something's on the roof, I was advised it would be screened. Yeah, so I was advised today by the applicant, that that would, that anything on, anything new on the roof would be screened. It's mostly screened by the existing parapet, but...
Then we would add that to the design, well, that's findings, where's the conditions?
Can't hurt to add it, you know.
So that would be added to what, three?
Yeah, that's a good place for it.
Planters and HVAC, et cetera.
So it'd be roof-mounted equipment below the parapet? Linda? Does that work, or what do you want?
Yes, and are you adding it under 8A?
I was adding it under number three.
Yeah, number three, number three for the screening of the equipment on the roof.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Roof-mounted, to say roof-mounted equipment should be screened.
So I'm prepared to make a, a motion, if you're comfortable. So I'd like to make a motion of approval for resolution 2018-19, odd number, but okay, with the modifications on, I don't know what page, but it's under the title of variance for waiver of off-street parking. Item two, adding under special privilege, that this is across the street from a public parking parcade and bus stop. And adding to condition three, that the roof-mounted HVAC systems shall be below the parapet. And adding to 8A, after the fourth line, after equipment, and roof-mounted HVAC, including effectiveness of the walls, blah, blah, blah. And that would be all the changes?
I will, I will second that.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? So, the item passes, there is a 10-day period during which somebody can file an appeal to this decision, and pay a $500 fee. If no such appeal is filed within that 10-day period, you will be free to move forward with the plans. Thank you. Okay, so thanks very much, you guys are free to leave if you want, but you're also welcome to stay and enjoy the festivities as we go to the next item. Thank you. And apologize to your family that we took so long, that we missed them. That is definitely a lesson in the process. Yes, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go on to number 407 Cascade Drive, and the construction of a new family residence, and is Ben going to give us this report?
Yes, I am. It's actually at 407 Cascade. Some brief background, it's currently a vacant site, it was previously developed with a residence, and lots of unpermitted additional items. And the applicants thankfully bought it, and realized that it wasn't worth trying to save, so they demolished all, all that junk. And they're currently proposing a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, 2,395-square-foot, two-story bedroom with a 530-square-foot attached garage. It will be 28.5 feet tall, which is the maximum height allowed under the zoning. It's noted that it does meet all of our black line zoning standards, such as height setback, floor area ratio. It is noted that a use permit is required, because it does not meet minimum lot width. And I will also note that the siding is proposed to be white with black trim, I guess that's the color de jour. Staff only has three issues with the project as proposed. The first has to do with the 28.5-foot height, in staff's opinion, the height of the building combined with the design, I'll get to that, is a little bit excessive for a level lot as viewed from the street, and we are recommending that it be reduced in front by three feet. The second issue is the relative lack of articulation, they do have some inset in the front, and a second-story balcony in back, but other than that, it's a very efficient design, stacking the second story straight on top of the first. And staff is recommending that the right-hand side is viewed from the street, or the west side on the second story be jogged in a couple feet. And this is simply to break up the outline of the building. It also will combine with the height and reduce the visible mass and bulk of the structure.
I'm sorry, Ben, could you repeat that again? Where are you proposing the jog?
It's on the west side of the building, on the second floor, so there's guest bedrooms one and two, and staff is recommending that that air, that length of the building be jogged in two feet, so each one of those bedrooms would lose two feet in width, and it would provide a two-foot jog between the plane of the first story and the plane of the second story. That would be something that would definitely articulate the building as viewed from the street. The third aspect has to do with privacy, and this is something that I have actually worked with the applicants and discussed, and this is to, in terms of proximity and privacy to the neighbor to the west, the two-story building. Whereas the majority of the windows on this don't impact neighbors directly, through a combination of blind wall and distance and landscape screening. There is the window on the second-story bedroom, which is directly across from the window on the second story of the neighbor to the west. And usually, we like to see a jog there, just, you know, from a privacy standpoint, what we find is that where you have two windows staring at each other, you end up with the blinds drawn most of the time. And given that the westerly neighbor was there first, staff's recommendation is that these windows be adjusted. There's a variety of ways you can deal with that. The most simple thing is just to use obscured glass. It's noted that as currently proposed, these are egress windows, so you can't do the other option, which is to kick the bottom of the window up to six feet, where a person of average height wouldn't be looking at anything, but you're still getting light. Another potential option is, is if the commission doesn't believe that the building needs to be jogged in the depth of both bedrooms, you could simply jog it in for the front bedroom, which would provide a street-facing wall in, to the north, on the north facade there of the second bedroom. So in other words, you'd have the first bedroom jogged in, second bedroom would be where they're proposing it, and you would have a two-foot wide area there that you could put your egress window for that second bedroom. And then you could do whatever you want with the windows that are facing the west neighbor. Let me know if I'm confusing you. But the idea is basically to provide additional privacy for that neighbor. And then the rest of it's fairly minor. The, the landscaping is fine, staff believes that even though the streetscape is really outstanding in that portion of Cascade with the existing mature trees, the, the yard itself is mostly low-level shrubbery and, and ground cover, and staff is recommending that they come in with a native mid-height tree of their choice. And then the last thing is, again, landscaping is a wonderful thing for screening, and they have a pitasporum hedge along the west property line, and discussing it with firefighters, amenable to preserving that, as long as there's a break in that, and as noted in the staff report, the applicant and, and staff have discussed it, and so where there are windows, they would remain, and then there's an area where there's a blind wall in the westerly neighbor, and they'd take out the, the hedge there, and that would provide a discontinuous hedge, which would improve the fire safety and meets the fire department's satisfaction. So with those three recommendations, reducing the height, jogging in the west side, and then the, either the obscured glass or one of the other options, and then the additional landscaping, staff recommends... landscaping, staff recommends this project for approval and is prepared to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for staff? Go ahead, Michelle.
Ben, thanks for the staff report. I thought it was really well-written. I just have a few questions. One is, on page A one point zero, they say that trees are going to be removed pending an arborist report. Can you tell me, are there any native trees meeting the heritage tree ordinance that are proposed for removal? That's the first of three questions.
No, there are two old fruit trees, and it's one of those situations where they're right where a house needs to go. So, and they're fruit trees, so they're, they're not considered heritage. They do require a tree removal permit. That will change shortly, by the way. Soon, the planning commission will have that authority to decide tree removal applications, but not yet. So that, they will have to go to the tree committee once they get their project approval.
Thank you. Also, also on page A one O, it's showing the, the seven-story poles placements. Can I just, so just, just as a matter of practice, do we have an ordinance that addresses where story poles are to be placed, or is this just the direction of staff on, it looks like they set, I guess there are eight-story poles, and they set the four corners and then the ridge line at the front and back, and then the two edges of the back deck. Is that normally what you, did they follow staff direction, or?
We discussed that. You know, the nice thing about having a straight gable house with, you know, the corners and no fancy cross ridges or anything like that, is that this was real straightforward. I mean, you can look at the story poles and really see what the house is like. So, yeah, it was just a quick discussion.
Okay. And then can you tell me where the hundred-year floodline is? He shows the creek setback, but I don't see a flood, a floodline.
Yeah, when we looked at that, they're fortunate in that their property...
Slops down at the back?
Slops well down to the back. And interestingly, you know, when you look at the property, you think, oh, yeah, it's a creek-abutting property, but it's not. The property across the creek actually owns the immediate stream bank. As a practical matter, you're in the floodplain by the time you get down to the bottom of the property.
But on the FEMA maps, where does the floodline fall for hundred-year flood, referencing the?
Right, I couldn't give you the exact location, but it's below, it's well below the, the building envelope.
So looking at the grading and drainage plan, you're saying it's at like the ninety-four top line?
Yeah, it's, it's within the banks, so it doesn't extend into the property, the level portion of the property.
Why don't you ask the question you had, Norma, about the jog?
I'm not sure my question is well-formulated, but I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm not an architect, but in looking at the plans, I have difficulty with just saying, okay, we'll move it in two feet at the west. And, and that will do it, because the west side is the neighbor with the taller property, right? And it's the east side, it seems to me, is more impacted by the volume and the massiveness of the house overlooking the lower structures on, on the left side of the house, of the property as you face it. And so, and then that's where the patio, that's where the external patios are as well, that cut-out. I don't, I don't have a problem with the design of the house. I think it, I mean, if you just look at the sketch, it's quite attractive. But when I saw the story poles out there, it's just massive.
So, Norma, you had a question about where the jog was, I thought.
Yes, can you tell me one more time where you're proposing that it jog?
Yes, if you look at...
And do you have, can you tell me a particular page that you're looking at as well?
Correct. Yes, it's sheet A two-point-one, upper-level floor plan.
I got it right here. A two-point-one.
Okay, and you'll see it's got a north arrow at the bottom there, so that'll line you.
So the top is the west, and the bottom is the east.
Correct. And so what staff's recommending is where you see guest bedroom number two and guest bedroom number one, along that west side or the upside on the page, you would pull that, that portion of the second floor in by two feet.
In from the west side?
The first floor. So, yeah, basically you have the first floor and then a little roof element, and then the building.
And so he's saying on plan page A three-point-one, A three-point-one, west elevation, that the second floor would be indented by two feet?
Yes.
And then another way to look at that would be at the south elevation on the top, he's saying on the left side of that, which is that west elevation, would be indented at that point. Now whether the architect decided to move the whole ridge line to the right to even it up a little bit, he's saying take this in.
Yeah, you actually wouldn't see it on the south because that jog would only impact the first two bedrooms. So you'd be more on sheet A three-O on the north elevation on the right. So when you're looking at it, you'd see where the garage is and the things like that. It would be what's currently got, the narrower bands of that vertical siding. It would just move that, move that line of the building. Right now, it goes straight from the ground up to the eve in one continuous line or plane. And that's the concern, is that it's just, that's a big expanse of unarticulated building on that side. And one thing to your remark about the impacts on the neighbors, that this is a six-foot setback to the west neighbor, and it's a ten-foot or nine-foot setback to the neighbor on the east, and there's additional landscaping on that side, and so...
But still, it's twenty-eight feet up above the neighbor on the east.
That was a concern by staff, but, and, you know, certainly your commission is free to direct the applicants to do, to make whatever modifications deemed appropriate to the structure.
I'm also concerned about the height. I, my question would be, can that, can the overall height be brought down?
Yes, of course.
Okay, and I take it the applicants are here today. Do you mind coming up to the podium? And I will see if any of the commissioners have questions for the applicants.
I'm trying to figure out the dimension from, let me see, let me pull this. Trying to figure out the dimension for the high point of that vaulted ceiling. I don't see, yes. Building section A on, on A four. So you show a cross-section, and there's a vaulted, I think, bed...
Building section A.
And that's bedroom. So it's hard to tell, just looking at the dimension lines, how, what, what's the highest point of that vaulted ceiling? Yeah.
I would estimate, it's probably about twelve feet at the, at the ridge.
So inside?
Inside, yeah, the high point of the master bedroom.
Any other comments for the applicant, questions for the applicant? Yeah, I'm sorry, questions? I have a couple of questions. We've heard staff mention a couple of changes that they're recommending to your design, so I wanted to get your reactions to, I mean, we'll just take the height, twenty-eight feet versus, twenty-eight point five feet versus twenty-five point five feet. Is that something that you are willing to consider?
Yeah, I mean, we'll consider anything in order to get it built. When we proposed this house, we're thinking, we're not asking for any variances. We know that it looks tall when you look at it. And obviously, we're looking for the most efficient use for that space, given that the lot is narrow. It's fifty feet instead of sixty. So you have limited FAR, so we want to maximize the square footage of living space. And do that as efficiently as possible. So, you know, obviously, coming here, we would go for the maximum height, and if that's not achievable, we would, you know, we have to drop it, we have to drop it. It's not ideal for us. Wouldn't be our first choice, obviously, or else we wouldn't propose it. But in doing so, we, we look at Jason, who's the architect, and ask, well, can we lower the height of the, of the ridge line to satisfy the commission while maintaining the integrity of the house as it's designed as much as possible? And I think when we originally, we, Jason had done some sketch-ups of, some studies of what it would be if we did the jog back of two feet, drop the roof three feet in the front. There's some issues with that on the interior of the space, which Jason can speak to, and he's got illustrations here. He's got a couple of ideas. If you're open to seeing those tonight, so, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we had the story poles erected fairly quickly. We were corresponding with Mr. Burdo, and I think it came down on a Wednesday, and it was if you can get the story poles up by Monday, that you can get on the agenda for today. So we got those up as fast as we could. I mean, when you get the news on Wednesday that you can get story poles up, and you start calling companies, it's, it's, it's slim-picking. So we did find someone that could get them up. Unfortunately, when they erected them, the story poles as they are right now, we confirmed it a few days ago with, with the survey points, they're six inches above, because there was a line on the plans where he accidentally added six inches instead of, instead of subtracting. So story poles are six inches too high, and it's visible on the site. We've got the, the elevation marks from the site survey that we have that established the grade, which is ninety-nine point seven feet. That's the grade point of the, of the lot above sea level. He's six inches above that when he measured the pitch of the roof. So, long story short, the story poles are six inches too high. I don't know if it makes a difference.
Okay, another question I have for you is the jog that Ben, hey, your mic is still on, by the way. The jog that Ben was talking about on the second-floor bedrooms that we were just discussing, how, what are you guys feeling about that?
Yeah, I'll have Jason comment on that.
I'm Jason Alden, architect. I thank you for the suggestions, for recommendations, for kind of exploring options. And we did look at them. I drew them up and I brought them here. And I think the jog is one thing I'm hoping to find another solution. It affects the design in an awkward way, in one regard. But I looked at the sections, because we, the recommendation to lower the ridge three feet down. One comment was the, the ceiling heights were nine foot six. In fact, the front of the house and the back of the house, there's two different ceiling heights. The, the back of the house has the great room, and that's at nine foot six. The front is six inches down, so then ceiling heights are nine feet. And, and just kind of an overall statement, you know, we weren't, our idea wasn't to get the biggest house on the property. We just worked within the constraints of the, of the, the height limits and all of that. So we just started there, thinking that that was an acceptable approach. We weren't meant, we weren't trying to be the biggest house on the, on the lot. But anyway, given that history, we are open to kind of figuring out how to make the massing less. And so after looking at the recommendations, I'd prefer if we could make the adjustment rather than on, on the, the east side with the jog, but move it to the, actually, the, move it to the other side where the porches are. We can actually reduce the volume and work with the existing design. And I have some sketches that I would like to show you of that recommendation, if possible.
Linda, I was gonna ask, when would be the appropriate time to look at, you know, sketches or options? Is that something that would come back? I'm just trying to figure out how to...
It really, it really should come back. What you, what you've done in the past, just because, you know, neighbors get notified, and they come to town hall, they look at the plans, and they read the staff report, and they might not show up. And then if new plans are presented, you really should continue it. Allow staff time to look at the revisions and prepare a staff report before your next meeting, and allow the neighbors time to, yeah.
Through the chair. I will say, without seeing your sketches, that I would tend to agree with you that there is a better way to reduce the volume than the suggestion of just moving the one side two feet. And I, I would like to see those sketches at an appropriate time and have a, a real set of plans that we could look at and approve.
I have another question for you guys, which is, there was a discussion about privacy concerns for the neighbors and, and adjusting the windows for the, the neighbors. Did you have a reaction to those suggestions?
I felt we were fine with obscuring, I think, the glass.
And also moving the house an additional foot.
Yes, we would prefer to move the house away from that neighbor if that would help the situation. Shift it over a foot or so to increase the distance and also obscuring the glass. We are fine with that. One of the things we're finding is, also, we're also looking not to reduce the ridge down three feet. It does have significant impact on the upper-level bedrooms, especially that middle bedroom. By the time the, the slope roof comes down, it's at six, six, six feet, six inches. And it's getting to a point where it's getting very low in that room. And so we were hoping that with the shift of the building and then the, having a new solution for the massing, maybe we can compromise the, the height, can come down a little bit, but maybe not the full three feet that we're interested in.
Okay. And if we get there, would you be willing, would we have timing issues for staff in terms of bringing this back with revised designs? Do we need to sign an agreement about an extension if we got to that point?
No, especially if they're, if they've got some options that they want to have examined, we could start that process and get on the December meeting.
All right. So I don't have any other questions. Are there other questions for the applicant?
I have just one other concern, I guess, if not a question.
Hold on.
Okay.
Just a moment, Michelle. So, Norma, I'm just trying to make sure we have questions for the applicant.
Kind of a, kind of a question. Based on my concern that it's the eastern side where the neighbors are one story. And so I do appreciate your shifting it from the west side, but then also if there's something you can do to maximize the privacy as well on the east side, I would appreciate that.
Kind of a question. Oh, I can, I can say that neighbors on the east side do have a hedge on their property that is well over their roof line of a one, one single-story house.
Yes, I noticed that, but you're still twice as... Yes, I noticed that, but you're still twice as high as that hedge. In a one-story house with two-story neighbors, it's something I'm sensitive to.
Okay. Do you guys have any other statements you want to make before I open up the hearing to any other members of the public who wish to speak? All right. Is anyone else in the audience here to speak on this matter? Please come on up, identify yourself, and go for it.
Yes, so I'm still Beverly Brewster, and I still live at 411 Cascade. And first, so I'm the western neighbor in the two-story house next door to 407. And I, first I want to say, this is, I think really this is the first time I've been to a Fairfax Planning Commission meeting, and I appreciate the thoughtful job you all are doing so much. It really makes me feel good about the town. And I also really appreciate Allison and her husband and their architect, because I think they've been extremely thoughtful and very considerate of the neighbors. So I'm looking forward to them being neighbors. So I mostly feel very positively about the whole situation, but I would say that where the current, very beautiful drawings place the house, I have had a concern about both light and privacy, because it is pretty tight to have the two houses with like that, the minimum amount of space between them. And I think really for both of us, that's not going to be ideal, because it's going to be kind of a dark tunnel. So if they did move the house over just a bit, that is probably more of a concern to my husband and me than the window or the jogging thing. I think just having it moved over a little bit would help us a lot, and I think they'd appreciate it, too. We'd have less of this dark tunnel between the two houses. And then the only other concern that I think that we have is about the back deck off the backyard, and I apologize that I didn't bring this up sooner. I've been remiss in not looking at the plans. But we have a very small little back deck off of our second-story bedroom, and there's a, like a, you know this, I'm sure, there's a solid wall there to, so that we, if we're on our bedroom deck, we don't look into their yard. And if they could do something on that back bedroom deck, you know, for privacy, for them and us, so that they're not like looking right down into our yard from the, you know, just a little something for priv, so those are my only concerns. And again, I really want, does anybody have any questions for me? Yeah?
I have, I do have a question for you. I don't know if you've seen the staff report, but on page five, staff, thank you, did a great job of showing us all of the addresses on adjoining properties, their lot sizes, their house sizes, number of bedrooms, garage. I don't see, you said you're at 411?
Yes. Uh-huh.
Oh, I don't, and you said you were right next door.
I am immediately next door.
Yeah, I don't see you listed here.
Is that right?
And so, I, you know, I don't want to make your information public, so I won't ask you to say it.
Well, you can go ahead and ask me anything. I'm a pastor of a church. I'm an open book.
I think since this is coming back, or maybe it won't, whatever, but if it does come back, maybe if you could just work with staff to get your information in there, would be great, because it's important.
Okay, sure. I'm so sorry. I have been remiss in not reviewing all the documents before the hearing tonight. But I would be happy to work with staff and give any information that you need about our house.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
No, thank you very much. Can you turn the mic off when you go? Appreciate that. All right. And anyone else have a question for the applicant before I close the hearing? Then I'm going to close the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Somebody want to start? Michelle?
I'll start. So if we wanted to keep this item and act on it, I would recommend denial. If the applicant wants to ask for a continuance, to revise the plans, then I'm happy to give my feedback. If that's the direction we're going in, I'll give feedback. I believe that this is a fairly rural, almost country-like area and very small scale, and I think that when you look at the chart that staff's provided, that not only is this one of the smaller lot size, and in fact, that's why a use permit is required, is because the lot width is small, but this is the largest house size proposed in the entire 15 lots that are used as a comparison. It's the largest number of bathrooms and largest floor area ratio by almost 10% greater than anything that exists out there. It's just too large. I could start getting into details about, you know, like the second, the second floor just in scale is just completely out of scale. The vertical windows at eight feet in length just aren't there. I think in general, the design, we're starting to move in the direction of a rural-looking building. It's got some elements that are good. I support staff's ideas around it being too boxy and so on, but I think the height is too big. The second floor is too large. The, I think the light, I think they're proposing lighting that's going to create glare that doesn't exist out there right now. And I think architecturally, it looks nice. The style of the building and the lighting fixtures are very rural-looking, but it's creating light that doesn't exist out there right now. I think the choice of sod draining into the backyard is an odd choice, but I think the rest of the landscaping is, is good. I think the colors are not really rural. So that's kind of my, my feedback. If it comes back, I think that the story poll should be amended to reflect the actual size of, of what the neighbors would be commenting on. You know, and I think that this is an excellent example of when the city council asks the planning commission, do we want to reduce the maximum lot size or building sizes in a single-family zoning district? This is what I'm thinking about. They're meeting setbacks, they're meeting floor area ratio. If we had revised the residential zoning district, say, go right to the planning director and get approval, it meets it if it hadn't come to us. So this is an example where I'm saying, ooh.
Yeah, no, this, and this is a very good example, because I thought about the same thing, is that it's not even at 3,000 square feet, and it's got issues. So that's why we have the design review process, and I think that's kind of a safety measure. You know, I don't think, it kind of shows a very good example of, you know, that it's all relative. Reducing the maximum square footage is not necessarily the answer, but, but that's, you know, that's a separate track. I, you know, I wanted to start off by saying, you know, I think this is a beautiful design. There are a lot of things that I like about it. I think, you know, there's a lot of good stuff here, so, you know, I do want to commend you for that. You did a great job with the renderings, and I think you probably were working closely with your client and listening to them. You know, I did go out there because I looked at it, and I thought this looks really massive, but maybe it's not. And I just happened to meet up with a few of the neighbors, and they kind of invited me to look at it from their perspective, from their decks and everything. And I think my initial reaction to it was correct, that this was massive in volume and that it needed to be broken up somehow. You know, if you look at your neighbor's, Beverly's house, Beverly, correct? You know, that house is also two stories, and it's big, but it's broken up, and it steps back and up, so it's not such a flat plain up against the street where a lot of people walk up and down that street. So, you know, volume, massing, breaking it up. I also, you know, I don't know if you know much about the history of that part of town. You know, that was a destination for summer, you know, vacationers and little cottages. There's a lot of, you know, vernacular for little cottages. I was looking at the, your beautiful walk-in closet, your master, you know, bedroom closet is very nice and generous, but a lot of houses in that area, the bedrooms are that size. I mean, everything is really small. And not saying that that's what you have to do, but I think it would be very respectful to, to look at the surroundings a little bit more and maybe kind of approach it from the history of the area and, you know, try to break it up, try to make it smaller. I was looking at exactly what Norma was saying about a way to reduce this, you know, just looking at it, it's almost like you can reduce it by three feet in every direction and maintain your design, and that would bring down the ridge. And, you know, somehow breaking it up a little bit, because when I did go on the deck across the street and I looked at, you know, you're looking down, the house, I guess, would be to the east, it's dwarfed, and I, you know, I could kind of see the two stories being a real issue, not so much for privacy, because I think you can treat, do window treatment for that, but you're going to block out all their light. There's all their, and that area gets dark and dank in the winter, well, year-round, but in the winter more. So I think having some sunlight or natural light is very important, and I don't, you know, I don't know how you can really help that with a two-second, you know, with a two-story building, but I just think the massing is an issue for me. So yes, I, you know, I can't support it today, although I think it's a beautiful project. I think it's, it needs to be a little bit more respectful of the history and the vernacular of the neighborhood. And, you know, talk to your neighbors, too. I know, talking to them, they were very open to, you know, working with you guys, I think, so.
Excuse me. I have nothing really to add. I concur with my associates here, and clearly, you're, you're trying to produce a beautiful living situation for you. I can see that it's, it's, it's very attractive, but I, I agree with my fellow commissioners and could, could not approve the massiveness of this house this evening.
So it looks like it might be in your interest, if you want to pursue it, to work with staff and come back to potentially modify the drawings and come back as opposed to ask us to make a decision tonight when we're kind of feeling the way we're feeling. So I would ask this staff how we would proceed.
Well, one thing, one thought would be if we're into the redesign mode and the applicants already have some concepts, I don't think it would hurt for them to just show them to you and get an immediate reaction, understanding that we're going to re-notice it with a modified house and that they've already gotten the viewpoints about it being too tall and too massive. I just, so that they're not kind of guessing.
I, yeah, I appreciate that, except I, we've got more items on the agenda, and it's already getting close to 10:30. So I would prefer if we hear, you know, whether the applicant wants to have us vote now or come back and, and work with you guys on revising the drawings and, and...
Okay.
Unfortunately, I think we're going to have to rely on you guys giving the feedback to them.
That is unfortunate.
So do you guys want to come up to the podium and tell us your reaction to our proposal here?
Yeah, so what, what's the purpose of voting if it's obviously going to be denied? We just, is there an advantage to come back and continue it? Yes, okay, so we want to continue it, obviously. Obviously, is much guideline, so like you said, we're not guessing, because, you know, we fit inside the envelope. There's guidelines, as you mentioned, there's maximum square footage, lot sizes, there's maximum square footage that you can build to put a maximum size, if you fit within that envelope. Just want to have as much guideline as possible.
I think I'm going to cut you off, because I do want to keep us moving along. What you heard from Commissioner Rodriguez, from Commissioner Gonzalez Parber, and from Commissioner Fregoso, I think are going to have to be the guidelines, which is the concerns about the mass, the concerns about the light, the concerns about the articulation, the privacy. These are all things that I think we've probably provided as much guidance as we can for the moment.
All right. Thank you.
So is, is the applicant not clear on what his options are? Or I'm not, I'm not clear, he, in other words, we can deny your application, and you can appeal it to city council. We can deny your application, and you can reapply and begin from scratch, reapplying with your fees and a new set of applications and be re-noticed. Or we can continue the item which enables you to work with staff and do revisions, and then you don't have to repay your fee, and then come back at a time when you've completed your revisions and working with staff, and they'll, and they'll reschedule it for a future hearing. So which one did you want? I'm not sure I understood.
Thank you for clarifying. Continuance, want to continue.
Great. Thank you. And so, do we need to vote on a continuance, or do we just agree? So someone want to move to continue and then?
Do we have to make the motion?
Yeah, motion to continue, and then the other thing would be, insofar as they seem like they're, they've been really prompt in turning things around, is to continue to December 20th and give them an opportunity possibly to come in with revised plans and get on that agenda. If, if we don't have enough time, as it turns out, to get the redesigns in and change the story polls and things like that, we can always continue it from then, but...
So I make a motion to continue item number three for 407 Cascade Drive to the December 22nd, 20th Planning Commission meeting.
I second that motion.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you guys back here. Okay, we are moving on now to item four, which is 119 Live Oak Avenue Stairway and Landing Edition. And Linda?
Yeah, so this project encompasses the construction of 95 square feet of exterior stairway and landing from the first floor rear deck down the west side of the house to access the mechanical equipment storage area. Right now, it's, it's, it's really pretty dangerous to try to get down to that area. This will just make it safer for all the residents and anyone servicing the equipment. Because the property does not meet the minimum size requirements based on its slope, this very minor project requires a use permit from the planning commission. It does, it meets all the setbacks. There's similar stairways on other residential properties in the neighborhood, and the stairway will be constructed to match the rear exterior deck, the materials and everything, and so we're recommending that you approve the application by adopting Resolution 2018-20.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Very, very quickly, I'm just, I'm looking at the photographs that were submitted, and I'm not sure if one of these is the actual house, because I noticed that it's, some of them are examples of similar...
So it's the bottom...
The bottom right?
It's the bottom right-hand corner is the actual house.
And the others are all, they're examples of, of similar conditions.
Similar types of stairways. You can see the white door to the room.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make sure. This is the type of project that we're hoping that in the future doesn't have to go to you guys.
Okay. No other questions for staff, so I will open up the public hearing on this item. And is the applicant here? Hello. I don't know if you guys have anything to add. I don't know if you guys have anything to add, or if any of my commissioners have any questions for you.
No, I'll make a motion to.
Well, hold on just a moment.
I'm ready.
I'm going to close the public hearing now, and go ahead, Michelle.
I make a motion to approve this application with Resolution Number 2018-20.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Great. So that has been approved, and there is a 10-day waiting period and a $500 fee for anyone who wants to file an appeal.
And I have to say that the applicants were very, very nice, considering what they had to go through for the stairway.
Okay, let us have it. Go ahead.
Should I wait the 10-day period before I apply for the building permit?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. And you're closed tomorrow, right? So come back next week?
And come between 9:00 and 11:00, because that's when the building official's there. That way he can make sure you give him everything that he needs.
That's the same guy when I rebuilt the house 12 years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
I forgot his name. All right, thank you very much. Mark, that's right, yeah.
We really appreciate your patience. Thank you very much. And Jessica, we appreciate your patience as well. Okay, so getting to Jessica's application.
The project encompasses the construction of a 108-square-foot artist studio with a sink and one electric outlet. The structure will have windows in the south and west walls, the access door will be on the east side, and there will be a skylight in the west portion of the studio roof. The store, the studio complies with all the setback regulations, but it does require a use permit, because the parcel does not meet the minimum size requirements based on its slope. The Planning Commission has granted similar use permits for accessory structures to be used as artist studios in the immediate neighborhood. There's one just a few houses up the street, and then there's another one down on Chester. The additional living space would not put the property out of character with the square footage of other homes found throughout the Ridgeway Avenue neighborhood. And so we are recommending that the commission approve the project by adopting Resolution 2018-21. And I'll just point out that we have included a condition that a deed restriction be signed, because there's going to be plumbing and electrical, that this be restricted for use as an artist studio. Maybe I, maybe we should, maybe we should add to that, as an artist studio for the use of the resident of the main building, main structure.
So do you want to turn your mic on?
No, just to sing.
If you have a question?
Yeah.
So that was just a sink, right? That's what you're saying? Okay, any other questions for staff?
I'm sorry, I spaced out. So earlier I was, I apologize, I was spacing out, but earlier I had some disconnect between the, how, the applicability of this in terms of the home occupation ordinance and the accessory structure or use ordinance and.
Want me to reiterate, reiterate what we discussed?
Yes, or, yes, or did what you just say, the recommendation, address what I was concerned with? Because that's where I spaced out. Okay.
Yes, it did. So, but I can, so.
That would be great.
Part of the concern was, you know, that our section on accessory structures, it lumps, it lumps permitted accessory uses with permitted accessory structures, and it lists home occupation. And that often leads to homeowners thinking that they can put home occupations in accessory buildings and it's a permitted use. But our definition of a home occupation is a business that's carried on in a main residential structure. So once you try to do a home occupation in an accessory structure, it requires a use permit, one, because home occupations are supposed to occur in the main house, and because your accessory structures are limited to use for storage, parking structures, you know, playhouses. So it, so did that?
Was the recommended change that you were adding?
Well, the recommended change was that she is, we are going to ask her to do a deed restriction, which will state that the structure is to be used as an artist studio by a resident of the main house. So in other words, she can't rent it out to somebody else to use for their art studio. It's supposed to, and that's in keeping with the intent of the home occupation ordinance, which says the home occupation can be run by residents of the house, but it cannot have employees. You can't have employees coming into the neighborhood. They didn't want the home occupations to be increasing traffic to their residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Jessica, come on up, and if you would like to add anything, go ahead.
I'd like to put some insulation in there, so I'm not too cold in the winter.
Yeah, that's on your plans. I'm sorry, I forgot to reiterate that. She wants some insulation.
That's about it. I just want to be able to work, you know, to make stuff in there. It's very messy, you know, working with ceramics, and I don't have a place in my house where I feel like I can, you know, I mean, it's dusty and wet and, you know, all that kind of thing. And that's why I need the sink, is because you're working with clay, you know.
Anyone have a question for the applicant?
I do. So the, thank you for providing us examples. So are you firing this work at the house?
No, I'm bringing it to other places to fire.
Okay, thank you. And then I noticed that you submitted a Marin Open Studios thing, so you're selling art from your unit?
I'm exhibiting. You know what? I didn't sell anything, and hardly anybody went up there, because it's so hard to get to, that I used a bedroom and made it look like, you know, to exhibit my stuff. But even, I was at the Falkirk last May with Open Studios. I keep looking for another place for Open Studios.
Uh-huh.
And I didn't sell anything there either.
This is beautiful work. Thank you.
I'm just, you know, happy making things right now. Unfortunately, I'm not selling anything, but I like to exhibit, and my house is not a good place for exhibiting, even in that studio, because people just don't go there. They want to go, like in San Rafael, where they can go from one studio to the other, and trying to find my place is hard for anybody, I think.
It's lovely to see your work. I never had, I wasn't aware that you were a sculptor. I know you sketch beautifully.
Oh, yeah.
But this is another dimension.
Right, well, before I did this, I did Cloisonne enamel, and I did, I'm a calligrapher, and I was a painter first, so.
She did this fabulous sketch of the Planning Commission a couple of years back. I can't remember what, I'll try to find it sometime and bring it in.
Oh, I heard about it.
It gave me something to do. It's probably, I should do that again now.
Yeah, you should have done that tonight, Jessica.
You were sitting here for however many hours you had to.
Right, that would be probably easier on my eyes than, you know, looking at my iPad or something, you know.
Yes, thank you for the examples. I think they're lovely, and I think it's great that you're carving out a space for yourself to work in and be free to create. I had a question about these photographs, the tiered, you know, the, kind of the step-down retaining walls. I'm trying to figure out how this relates to the main house. I couldn't figure out where the main house was. So that's, okay, if I'm looking at the photographs, the one on the upper right-hand corner, your house is white?
It's a, it's a light lilac color or lavender, and it's below, it's below the house, so the house is up.
So the, so you're coming downhill to the studio?
Yeah, and I have a path, and, you know, I have.
You have a path that goes down there.
Stairs and a path to this place, yeah.
Okay.
Looks a little treacherous.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is that it was going to be kind of tough to get down there, especially during the rainy season, but you'll figure that out.
Yeah, I'm, it's not so far. I mean, right now I'm going to Fort Mason to do ceramics, and that's a much bigger trip for me.
So you, you tiered down, and then, but there comes a place where these retaining walls come at an angle? They kind of stop?
Well, let's say my house was up there, and then I have an retaining wall going this way, an retaining wall going that way, and the shed would be.
Would be right nested inside the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like you started to put gravel where you're going to have a pad or?
Well, I was using gravel, you know, I was, you know, I'm not sure what I'm going to do, because today I found out the tough shed doesn't work on any place where they have to go upstairs, or downstairs, or handing things over, or, you know, and so it's in a funny spot, and I have to find somebody to build it, because I was going to go with tough shed and had everything all figured out, now I have to figure out.
Is there a local builder, maybe?
Yeah, someone that's used to this kind of area.
Okay, so you're going to have some kind of stair pathway down to this?
I have already. There's actually stairs going.
If you, if you look at the photographs. The ones on the bottom? It may have been folded under to try to make it fit in the folder.
Yeah, the bottom one shows the path to the space.
Okay. Okay, 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 that, yeah.
And there's also a path going to some stairs going down to Taylor, and also a path going up the side of the house with stairs.
Okay.
So it actually has a path going right to that spot.
Okay, yeah, I just, I couldn't connect the dots from your house to the, to the pad.
Well, I didn't take the rest of the picture, going down the side of the house and going, then it winds up on that path.
Okay, okay. I just, just wanted to know. Okay, I think it's great that you're doing this.
Well, it's been a long-term thing I've wanted to do for some years now, and finally, I think it's going to happen.
Good. Congratulations.
It's exciting.
Yes, good luck.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, Jessica, thank you. Could you turn the mic off, and we will close the public hearing, bring this back to the commission? And do we want to have any discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this application at 154 Ridgeway Avenue, Resolution 2018-21.
I will second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? So Jessica, your application's been approved. There's a 10-day period during which someone may appeal this decision, and if they do, they'll be filing a $500 fee for the appeal. Otherwise, after the 10 days, you can move forward. Great.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks for staying here this evening, and have a great evening. And we are at 10:35-ish, and we have PDD Development Standards. Do we want to take a short break, or do we just want to run in? Ladies, do you guys care?
Can we set a limit? Are we, are we proposing that we get through this and finalize it?
Oh, yeah, we're going to get through it. We're on a roll now.
And come back to it? What was your thinking?
My thinking was that you'll give me direction, and I will come at your, at the next, as quickly as I can, with a regu, with an ordinance, recommended ordinance for your commission's recommendation.
So do you guys want to take a break, or is everybody ready to go? Let's go, Ben. We'll get, let's keep going.
All right, before we get to the witching hour, so briefly on background, and your commission has been aware of the general trends in state law that are consistently eroding local governmental discretion, and particularly in the area of housing, that we have a housing shortage, and for better, for worse, the state feels that one solution to that is to limit the ability of local governments to deny, reduce the density of, or render infeasible housing developments. And that's straight out of the Housing Accountability Act purpose. So what's happening is the type of things that Fairfax has always used to great effect. I mean, we just saw that in an earlier application, where there's your black line standards, and clearly it was inconsistent, and adjustments needed to be made, a direction was given, redesign will occur, they'll come back. Well, now the state's saying, well, for large developments, you don't get to do that. So what's happening is we now have to pivot at a local jurisdictional level to provide the type of hard black line standards that any applicant can easily understand. And in particular, in zoning districts such as the Planned Development District, where the town has heretofore relied on a multi-phased iterative development review process to great success, with things like Canyon Village, where you end up with lots of open space and nice cluster development, something that's consistent. But now we have to, we have a very limited shot clock to tell an applicant everything about whether it's consistent or not with our regulations, which means that instead of having a phased submittal process, which was previously anticipated in the PDD zone, we're now having to front-end load all the submittal requirements. This is one of the recommendations by staff, is that we will now take all the different phases of submittal requirements and say, provide it to us upfront, because we need that, obviously, to come to a decision and to make a recommendation regarding, you know, whether it's consistent with the town's policies. We also need to develop black line development standards for PDD districts. This, you know, whether, you can look at the language, we've included the PDD chapter, and you can just see that there's basically very little in the way of what would be termed under the current state statute, objective development standards, something like density, you know, this, this many units per acre. So staff believes that there is a threat of development that would be virtually unreviewed by our local discretionary process under the current regulations, and therefore we want to modify, we are recommending that the town modify that chapter and come up with some hard line standards. So I don't know exactly what those standards will be, but they will be, provide the type of definitive answer to an applicant looking to develop on property, whether it's runoff, or tree removal, or grading, or, we will be working on that. We're already considering those type of changes. And that furthermore, and this is what staff has at the very end of the report on page six, no, excuse me, seven and eight, for conclusions or recommendations, that A, we're requiring that all previously phased application submittal requirements be required upfront, and, you know, that's something that, I mean, not even sure your commission would need to see. It's just direction from the commission. And then the second is to modify potentially non-objective development standards into specific objective requirements. And like I said, I'm hoping that certainly by the December meeting, we will have that information, provide a ministerial path for determining whether PDD project applications are in conformance with tan, town standards and purposes they implement. So in other words, this is the nondiscretionary aspect that we're headed towards under the state regulations. And then the last part is to say that if we've got PDD zone sites that are on steep slopes, to consider relating average slope to density, to development density. And what we're looking at here is just acknowledging the fact that the steeper the slope, the more inherent. the fact that the steeper the slope, the more inherent constraints on development. That's why these sites are currently undeveloped, and therefore, the more appropriate, more stringent, increasingly stringent standards are. And so what you have there is something that relates where you take a current parcel, and it has an average slope of greater than 30 percent, we would apply a minimum lot density of 10 acres and a maximum floor area of 3,000 square feet. So the houses get smaller and the lots get bigger. And then 20% to 29%, 5-acre minimum lot density. And now density, let me just quickly explain that that's not the same thing as lot size. This would still allow for clustering, because that's one of the purposes of a planned development district, is that you're not sprawling across these hillsides. You're bringing the houses into a much smaller overall development footprint, which limits the amount of resources that are consumed, limits runoff, limits the impact on the natural landscape. And again, we can look at things like Canyon Village and other nearby developments that have successfully preserved the majority of the sites in open space and gotten a good number of units in the areas that are designated for development. So you would have, much as with Canyon Village, in an area of maybe three or four acres, you could have a dozen units or more in that area. But if you looked at the overall size of the site, and you related the total number of units versus the parent site, you would end up with one unit per five acres, or if it were steep, more than 30 percent, one unit per 10 acres. And then finally, if it were a relatively shallow slope site, 10% to 19%, you would only have to have a lot density of two acres, and you could have theoretically, under our current standards, a 5,000-square-foot house, although we'll be working on objective development standards to address the circumstances under which somebody would be allowed a 5,000-square-foot house. So that's my recommendations. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Who's got questions for the planning director?
I have a question. I'm not sure I understood your comment about doing all the phases of the review process at one time. Are you talking about, like, design review? You would wanna see engineered drawings, like for a building permit, alongside with, you know, the design, so your design. So everything would have to come in for, like, the building permit, the planning, design review permit?
Not quite that stringent, because obviously, the construction drawings would only proceed once somebody were to get sign-off on what the basic number of units are, and what the setbacks would be, and things like that. But if you look at the staff report, it talks about the type of information we would be looking for, historic resources, slope, natural habitat, hazards. We would probably ask them to give us information that they're undergrounding the information, or, excuse me, undergrounding utilities. So it's just taking every... This is what's so sad about what the state's doing, is there's a million logical reasons why you do the process that Fairfax has previously had, currently has, because you don't necessarily wanna require that information. It makes it terribly expensive upfront. But we don't have any choice if we're gonna be reviewing a project and saying, "Oh, this complies with the density," or it doesn't. So everything short of construction drawings would be required upfront.
Yeah, that's too bad. I mean, I really think that's a disservice to the, you know, to the applicants, because I think that's where a lot of projects go south. Yeah, so, cuz I think, yeah, the process we have now works, I think, for everybody, especially the applicant, so that they don't have to waste their resources and time.
Well, on the other hand, you know, to say one thing is that we will be giving them a yes or no, and in theory, they would have a much more predictable outcome. So it's gonna be much more expensive upfront, but at the end of the day, in theory, to avoid a losing lawsuit on the town's part, we would have to be able, they would have to understand, this is how many units you get, and this is, you know, how big they would be and things like that. So they would know that right upfront.
So I'm concerned, I'm thinking about this maybe a little bit differently than staff, and I don't know if I'm going down the wrong track or what. As I look at the BBK material, what it says is that the Housing Accountability Act applies to all housing units, and that, so that would mean, looking at our staff report on page three, that's all of these zoning districts, and that what we're trying to do is design objective standards that would protect us by creating objective standards so that staff can deny, or we can deny it, and those standards have to be designed to address public health specifically, and must be quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable standards. And so I could see why we're starting to go down this road, going back to the staff report on page three of the PDD, because there is nothing. So I could see why we want to act on that. But I'm seeing us go, have to go broader and say that these objective standards are linked to public health and can be denied if you don't provide these things. And I think that it would have to apply to all of these zoning districts, and that, and I do think, actually, that Ben is starting to go down the right road by, in here, he attaches the PDD ordinance. And on page, well, 17 dot 112 dot 020 is the beginning of some standards that we could begin expanding from. We could start from here, because it says, "We need a survey, we need grading plans, we need certain things." We could begin expanding on this list, but then linking it back to, on his staff report of page five, where we're starting to have topical areas that we could create quantifiable standards based upon layers of data. If we were, and because I haven't really looked at what we have, I don't know what we could do, but as an example, he lists historic resources, hazards, and I'm thinking flood and geo. We could say, if any portion of your site, based upon you providing this geotechnical report, has a flood zone of 100, you can't build there. If it's geo, and it's over a 15% slope, you can't build there, you know, unless you're going through an exception by the planning commission. So I just think we have to keep drafting language that could overlay to all of these zoning districts that trigger into an expansion of this portion of this code. But we've got to get to some of those layers of data where we're having some conversations about what are those quantifiable standards that we can link to health and safety and come up with numbers on those topic areas. And I, you know, you could say cannot impact, you know, the Office of Historic Resources says, "Any building over," I think it's 30 years old or whatever, you know, we could say, "Can't 50, you can't demo any building that's 50. Any lot that has that, you have to be, you know, you can't be within 100 feet of it." I mean, I don't know. We'd have to figure out, and I need more data, and we keep, I'm getting a little frustrated that we keep, I wanna get to the data. I wanna get to some drafts. But I think we're starting to think in the right direction.
Maybe we could, maybe we could take something like this bulky house, or a couple of different plans, and kinda work backwards into the standards, work backwards and forwards coming into it. But I see what you're saying about putting it into the existing, fleshing out the existing code that we have.
Is staff saying that all the remaining large parcels are PDD, and that's why you're focused on PDD, or is there any other zone properties that are large that could subdivide? Or does this mean that any of the other parcels that are non-PDD could not... Well, because, cuz I guess I'm thinking that there's multiple zones, that is there zones of properties in UR10 or UR7s that by applying these, could we could get stuff we don't want then? Is that, I guess maybe that's what he's thinking. But why are we only doing PDDs?
Why are we focusing on PDD? It's a little bit of a triage situation in that the majority of the other zones, at a minimum, have a density standard. The PDD, it's very flexibility as it's undoing right now, because it doesn't have a maximum density. So, you know, the sky's the limit in terms, hypothetically, of course.
That's because we wanted to control every little thing.
All we have to do is just take something like this and say, "Until further notice, it's that density," I think.
But can I ask you a question, Ben?
And, but the moratorium is a start. It announces our intention to not approve any development on PDD zone properties. Oh, that's, excuse me, that's what I should've said, of course. It's in the staff report, but the town council at their November 7th meeting did adopt a 45-day moratorium, which it's anticipated at their December meeting, they will continue for another 10 and a half months to afford an opportunity to review this. But it still behooves the town to act very expeditiously. And again, the remainder of the large undeveloped parcels have density standards. PDD doesn't. So that's why the focus is, and we started this conversation at the planning commission in October, and we will be having more detailed systemic and global conversations with your commission regarding objective development standards, for example, in the commercial core, because even though the Housing Accountability Act sort of looks at what's going on on PDD parcels, Senate Bill 35, where there's no parking required, and it's a non-discretionary process, looks into our commercial core. So this is what Commissioner Rodriguez was alluding to, is we need to, we do need to expand it out, and we will be coming back with that more global discussion about how we evaluate and integrate historicity and the historic character of the town. I mean, this is going a little bit off topic, but we are engaging with Cassidy DeBaker, and she is working on developing historic resource guidelines, for lack of a better word. So we will fold those into the context of discussions about what is appropriate for the downtown area and the various zone districts downtown. So staff agrees with Commissioner Rodriguez that, yes, this does need to be expanded out into zoning districts beyond just PDD. But again, this is sort of a triage on something that is really lacking virtually any objective standards.
Well, if we only have a 45-day period, this next meeting in December, we need something to backfill the council's 45, the 45-day thing.
Well, they will continue this in December, but yeah, I will come back to your commission if you agree. And like I said, the first step, and what's an easy one, is this slope-density relationship in size of the units, where this is what the state is saying you have to do, and this would address the primary issue, which is, you could have a steep slope right now. We don't have any density relationship. If you look at similar parcels, undeveloped parcels in town, we have applied a low-density standard to those, whether it's UR7 or UR10. For example, the Marinada Heights is UR10. So that's 100 acres, it's got a maximum of 10 units. That's a steeply-sloped parcel.
I just wonder whether we need a subcommittee or something to work on this topic, because it just needs some effort.
Well, here we are. It can't happen, and yet it's happening.
It's not happening efficiently or as quickly as it needs to. And we don't have the information and materials that we need in order to move it further. I think a subcommittee or a working group...
That just actually sounds like more delay to me, frankly. I would rather we follow what Ben's suggesting, is he's gonna, you're talking about coming back to us with a, like, ordinance?
That's correct.
He's saying an ordinance, so what is he asking us to agree on? An ordinance that addresses the staff recommendations down here, but...
So let's talk about the staff recommendations specifically. And what is that, page seven? So the first one, requiring all previously phased application submittal requirements prior to a project being considered complete.
We have to do that, right? Otherwise, we wouldn't have the information. And, you know, in a way, I know, it does, it's more expensive, it puts the onus on the developer to do everything upfront. But in a way, it gets us out of that whack-a-mole mentality, where, "Come in with your concept, and we'll beat you up, and then come in with a preliminary draft, and we'll beat you up, and then come back with a site plan, and we'll beat you up, and then come back with something else." And so we've had this whack-a-mole controlling process, frankly. Look at what we did with Victory Village. That's a prime example of how concerns of control just wound up extending and screwing up a project. And anyway, so I think it's good that we get a lot of this preliminary stuff, and now we have to have it in order to be able to make your 30-day or 60-day determination on whether it's complete and acceptable in any way.
Yeah, I don't know how much more conversation. I mean, I hear what Esther's saying about it in terms of, like you say, the cost and the onus, but I agree. If we've got the shock, what did you call it? Shock clock?
I'm borrowing that phrase from something else you'll be thrilled to wrestle with, the 5G discussion.
Oh, right, right.
Can I, can I just follow up with that? Cuz it's, you know, what happened with the House on Cascade is kind of a good example, where they started to conceptualize alternates, and it's like a stab in the dark. You don't, you have so many options and so many things to, you know, that have to coordinate and work out, and there's a lot of guessing going on in that process. And sometimes it's good to just know, "Am I headed the right direction?" You know, "Or have I missed something huge?"
And this does not preclude coming in and talking to staff with some ideas, right?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say, if maybe, I mean, and I can have this discussion offline, to understand a little bit about how you would guide, I guess, an applicant, it's like, "Oh, hey..." guess, an applicant, like, oh, hey, you know, have them come in, say that we recommend that you come in before, just to start looking at concepts before you start submitting something official, so that you are not going down a rabbit hole. And, you know, because there's a lot of pressure on everybody to get it right the first time, you're never gonna get it right the first time, but, but the thing is that it just, it's becoming so difficult to develop in general, and this kind of just makes the guessing work more difficult for everybody. So, maybe there's something that you guys can do that's not on an official level, where you can help applicants with the guesswork.
But also, if, once we do have these standards in place, that will provide guidance for them. Because right now, there's nothing on a PDD. Nada.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, you know, I agree. I agree that there has to be something, I think, you know, as you were saying, Shaheen was saying, that we didn't have standards because we wanted to control everything that came before us or before the town, but that's kind of backfired now in light of the new state mandate. So, so now, now we're kind of forced to define it.
I think we're beating this horse, Dad, so I want to move to the next one. Yeah, no, I get it. I, I just think the next one is, the recommendation is modify potentially non-objective developments, submittal requirements into specific objective requirements. That's, yeah, let's do that. Yeah, just do that. I mean, it just sounds so easy, but it's a little bit more complicated than just that one sentence, isn't it?
That's gonna probably take a little bit of time, because, well, the submittal requirements are one thing, but in, in terms of just getting it as something that's objective, everybody's scratching their head on that, so we'll, we'll be working on that, too.
The third recommendation, develop a ministerial path for determining whether PDD project applications are in conformance with town standards and the purposes they implement.
Yeah, basically, the state mandates that this is not going to be a discretionary review process if they meet certain criteria, so the idea is to give them a punch list to say, okay, you want to develop this site, here's the information that you have to provide. If you do that, then within 30 days, you know, because it's going to be less than 150 units, we have to tell you it complies or it doesn't comply with these standards. If it complies with those standards, then, you know, you go to the building permit process. It's, I mean, that's one thing, it's amazing, is, you know, just casting aside all the other processes, so, yes.
But, but you know, any developer who really knows what they're doing, I think, will, will appreciate this, because it, it, it does give them those guidelines up front, and they will learn what they are, and they will come, and they will know that they have to come and talk to you. And, you know, the process we had, I was never, I actually, this may not be perfect, but looking at what we, the whack-a-mole process we did, and this, I lean more towards this, because everybody knows what we're talking about. Obviously, it's going to be difficult to do it, but one of the problems I think we had is that our, our concerns and our community discussions and review of projects was too subjective to, to, oh, I don't like the look of it, I don't like the feel of it, you know what? I don't like those people. Oh, the, the roof is, the roof is slanted, it should be peaked. Why should it be peaked instead of slanted? I think that this will help with larger developments that are coming before us. I had a couple of questions, I'm not sure these apply now, but we were supposed to review this last month, and I went through it, and I had a couple of questions. Maybe I'll go ahead and ask you, maybe they, they don't mean anything anymore, but for instance, the, when, when we had the new density bonus requirements, it was problematic because the commission at that time, and the community, was not willing to talk about standards. And, for instance, in terms of density bonus, I and other commissioners used to say, we should have a list of priorities that we need to do in advance. Linda, you'll remember this. If, if someone is going to propose a, a development with a density bonus, then we need to decide, there's options that we have. For instance, will we, will we give in on the parking, or will we give a little on the open space, or what is the height where we want to really hold the line? So, I wanted to have these discussions so that we could standardize what are our priorities, so that when a density bonus came to us, we had already discussed the height, for instance, would be more important to us than that fourth parking space, or we would rather provide a concession. When we're looking at concessions, here's the priority of how we would like to offer concessions. So, we have some agreement on those things, and I believe this takes us there in a way that will be very helpful in dealing with density bonus and concessions. And I think it'll also be helpful, frankly, when I was developing housing, we worked out all of this stuff before you ever went to the council to give them a concept idea of what you're planning, because they wanted to know. And so, I'm actually not terribly upset. The timing will be a crunch. The timing is ridiculous, but the concept of how to do it, I think is actually good. So, my questions, for instance, are, well, this was before we got to the Victory Village, but should, do these standards then apply to the undeveloped parcels of the Victory Village property? Or is that something, is that something already gone and done? For instance, the wall property. So, when something is in the middle, like we have Victory Village and the wall property, and I don't know what else, are they bound by what we've discussed before? Obviously, you need probably some sort of a actual application for it to hold to where you are now, but the wall property, so does that mean we go back and redo all of that stuff on the wall property? Have we agreed to something on the wall property that, that we don't have development standards?
Well, very briefly, the Victory Village, the density's already set for the remain, the two parcels that are about to be created with filing of the parcel map. So, there's basically one house per each of those parcels, so.
But still, there's other standards here that need to be considered if someone's applying a proposal to build there.
Yes, it would have been nice to have applied some of those standards up front. I don't know, that's an interesting question. Yes, I suppose if we did develop that, we would be able to apply them. The, the primary thrust of this, again, when you look at denial, reduction in density and stuff like that, it's really more of a numbers game in terms of units. So, insofar as its potential applicability to the wall property, of course, we really, it's not on the agenda, but suffice to say that the wall property has a density standard, so that when the state says black line, they're looking, you know, what's your density standard? So, if we've said it's one unit per 10 acres, then that's pretty much the direction that we better be prepared to go.
But to Michelle's point.
I also identified areas in our code, for instance, 17, 112, 050, where I think, well, we need to then review and revise this section, exactly what you're talking about, where we have to look at each of these sections and kind of fine-tune it and tweak it to make it a standard criteria. And, and, and so I highlighted several of those areas. For instance, in one section, it says, it shall include the following presented in a general schematic fashion. Well, that's no longer sufficient, so all of these, each of these sections needs to be reviewed and, and tweaked. But we need the standards before you can go in and tweak the sections.
But I think that point that you just brought up about a prop, a large property that may have a density standard, that we still, it would not come before us in applying this, is my impression of this. That large property that you were bringing up, they would design their project to meet the density, but that we would, they could in fact go right to building permit and not here, because, and only through the building department process could they deny it if?
Building based on the density.
That, and if the public, there was adverse effect determined on public health.
Where are you reading?
I'm looking at this housing accountability thing. So, that's why we have to develop those standards now, and that's why we have a 45-day moratorium. That's why I'm linking those.
It's the density, it's good to go.
Yeah, and I think that's, yeah, that's the point, is that we don't get to weigh in. If they check all the boxes and they meet all the requirements for completeness, we never, we never see it.
We need to provide every little box for them to check.
Yes.
What you guys will be bringing to us, I'm trying to figure out how we're, how we're gonna follow this.
Now, and so is that number two of your staff recommendations? So, that's what you're thinking?
Correct.
Okay.
And number three, that would be number two and three.
That would be, yeah, okay.
Now, what is the 45 days?
That's the moratorium. But we're, I, I just don't see us as slowing down. We're gonna keep moving on as quickly as we can on this.
But still, what is the 45 days?
What, what it's saying is that.
45 days, we won't accept a development proposal with a PDD.
Well, we actually have to accept an application, but what we're saying is we will not approve it. That, that, yeah, you'd like to say we're not gonna accept any applications, but that's the rub, is we have to accept applications, so, but it's, it's a moratorium on approval of development applications, so, right, so. Well, it's 45 days, and then it's renewable for another 10 and a half months, and then, as we're doing with the cannabis regulations, you have an option to extend that another year, so.
But we don't have that much time.
No, no. Well, I think, yeah, we'll, we'll come back in December, so that will be the first phase. And then the last, the last recommendation would be, direction from your commission, item number four.
If, if I'm available, I would be happy to come in and brainstorm or look at something or troubleshoot or, if, if I'm around, when you guys.
Well, I mean, I think that the outline of what you've got here on number four with the, the slopes and the, I mean, I don't have concerns off the top of my head with that, Ben.
I do, I think the maximum floor area should be much lower.
Aha.
And I would go along to say it was, would be consistent with my 1,500 to 3,500 maximum.
For, for the range? Start from 1,500 to 2 acres, I'm going to.
You start with the lower numbers with the larger slope.
But that's 10 acres.
Right, but you're talking about a much bigger slope.
Yeah.
All right, so do we have thoughts on, on that one, other than what Michelle's pointed out?
Where is the floor area ratio on here?
So, under max floor area on the right?
Oh, well.
It's not a floor area ratio, it's the max floor area.
But I'm looking at the percentage, because this doesn't, it just gives you a maximum floor area, it doesn't give you a ratio.
Right, because it's based on the larger slope.
Yeah, the, the challenge with trying to apply, floor area ratios usually break down when you get it much over 20,000 square feet, because when you think about it, unless you're into a really small fraction, fractional floor area ratio, it's very hard to say, out of a 10-acre parcel, you're gonna extrapolate, you know, that's 430,000 square feet, you're gonna extrapolate a 3,000-square-foot house, you know, it's such a small fraction, it's like .001 or something like that. That's why you just come up with a cap and.
But that's why I like what Michelle is suggesting, because especially when you get down to the smaller acres, I think the 5,000 is excessive.
Can we see this thing in block form and graphic form somehow? Because it doesn't make sense to me that with a reduced slope, 2 acres, you'd get 5,000 square feet, but 10 acres, I understand there's more of a slope, it, they, I.
Well, and Michelle's recommendation is that 3,000 is 1,500, and that 4,000 is maybe 2,500, and the 5,000 is 3,500.
I, I, I need to see it graphically somehow. I, I don't know.
I think I'm too tired to visualize this, but I'm just thinking, okay, so the steeper the slope, the smaller the, the floor area. But the steeper the slope, the more stories you might end up with to make up for that, and so then you might end up with a tiny footprint because now you have less floor area, but the only way you can build is if you have multiple stories, you know, so it's kind of, I don't know, I, I can't, I can't really, you know.
It's hard to visualize.
It's hard, it's hard to make a decision, because every, I mean, we have so many steep sites here, I don't know how many sites we have that are 10%. I mean, that's almost flat to me, when I think about a lot of the, you know, our parcels. So, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's, I think it's, it's too simple to say.
Yeah, but that's kind of the purpose here, isn't it, that we come up with something that's objective, simple, knowable, concrete, identifiable, early on in the process, and so more complication is gonna mean less objective. So, I just want us to be careful.
Yes, no, I agree, because I, I think my, you know, my take on this is, is very personal or very subjective, right? Because I know how many, you know, ways you can do this. It's, there's no simple solution to development.
Well, but I think one of the things that we might want to consider is biting the bullet and doing something that might be too simple for the sake of doing something as opposed to nothing.
Let me ask you a question, Ben. If, say that these are the standards, right, and, and they comply, so an applicant complies with all the standards, and then it gets reviewed on a ministerial level. But say that for some reason, they can accommodate more development, then at that point, then would it come before us? It would not, it would just be denied. It would just be denied.
We could design it with an exception process, so that they're back to the whack-a-mole, for lack of a better word, process.
But whack-a-mole.
Like 407.
I think we're nicer than that.
Like 407 Cascade.
Yeah, the attempt here is to simply say that somewhere on a 10-acre parcel, you're going to be able to build a unit. Or, within, not, excuse me, let me rephrase that. It's not a 10-acre parcel, but in a, one per 10-acre density, development density, you're going to be able to build a unit that is acceptable to the town. Now, I'm getting feedback that we need to reduce the maximum floor areas down, which is fine, and I can come back with that recommendation. But the idea is that even with some of the constraints that we know are applicable to most, if not all of these parcels, where we start looking at, not just slope, but slope, site stability, you know, this is this idea about just saying, "Okay, let's start carving out areas." So, if you're in a riparian zone, that's out. And you just start, you know, carving these up. But, that's why, as you get into a steeper site, it really makes sense to say, "Hey, I don't know how big your existing parcel is, but at the end of it, this is what we're prepared to have to give you sight unseen." You know, you come in and you document that.
But then, we also have lot coverage standards, right? That would...
Yeah, again, one of the challenges with these hillside parcels is that the coverage is more oriented towards more suburban or downtown areas, where we just say, this is, you know, with a smaller, much smaller parcel, we come in with our .35 coverage limit. I mean, if, the coverage is one of those standards that we would probably want to evaluate, because we want to minimize driveway length. But the problem is, is you can't use a word like minimization. You have to, you have to come up with a standard that says, "If your driveway's more than this length, you have to do this." Or, you can't have a driveway more than a certain length. This is what, the fundamental problem with the state's regulations is it's oriented towards urban-style development. And the minute you get into undeveloped, highly constrained parcels, like you have in Marin County and in Fairfax, it falls apart, because this one-size-fits-all, you know, put this grid on it, and there's your density and go. You know, it ignores all the unique attributes. So, but we will come up with something, because we're forced to do so. And at the end of the day, it will probably be less than they could have otherwise have achieved through our more longer-term process. But at the same time, they will go in with something that they can understand, and hopefully they'll be close, especially if they do their homework, and we have all of the submittal requirements clearly spelled out, and they do that. So, when they, when they do their little matrix or their overlays, and they say, "Okay, here's all the undeveloped portions of this parent parcel, here's what we have left, here's the density, here's where we're putting the houses," and we can say, "Okay, you've done that analysis correctly." Or, "Wait a minute, you haven't done, you know, you haven't looked at these factors. You need to incorporate that into your analysis."
It's going to be more work for staff upfront in that relationship with the developers, which can be a good thing overall, except that it will take more staff time, perhaps.
Well, and right now, we're going to get absolutely killed, because until you have that punch list of submittal requirements, we've got nothing to say yea or nay. I mean, I've been to planning conferences on this, and even cities like Berkeley, which are in the midst of dealing with Housing Accountability Act and SB 35 developments, he was just doing examples of, "How do you evaluate this?" You know, these are professional planners who've done, and even in an urban environment, it's just, it's so hard to get all that information. And if you don't have those standards, you can't even evaluate the project, so.
Okay, so, are we, can we wrap this one up?
Yes, so, if I get consensus direction from the planning commission to pursue all of the above, we'll come back to your commission at the December meeting with draft regulations for your recommendation to the council.
Yeah, and I think that's, again, a very heavy lift for you guys, but I'd love to see it happen, so.
Can I ask one last question? So, in looking as an example at the maximum floor area, is this still taking into account accessory structures? Like chicken coops?
You know, and this was brought up to the council, or in the staff report, this got continued yet again. But my sense is that they like the recommendation to have one unconditioned, limited-height accessory structure, so we're not there yet.
Because I'm wondering if you need to codify that before this can make sense, you know?
Well, right now, it all counts, right? Except the first 500 square feet of garage and things like that. But, right now, yeah, if you have multiple accessory structures, each and every one of them qualifies.
Has to count toward the floor area.
Right, so we're just going on our current regulations, and then ultimately, whatever we decide to apply.
So, hopefully, that'll get approved before this is standardized.
It may be, that's the only thing that's approved.
Okay, well, that would be nice. Okay.
Okay, I think we're on to the next item on the agenda. So, did everybody have a chance? Do we have enough of us to vote on these minutes?
I was not here, so I can't vote.
So, there's only three of us that were here. Is that not enough? All right, we're going to pick that one over. And then, we get the planning director's report.
This is a little bit complicated, but if you pull, if you go page in, three pages. Yes, we have so many meetings that we're doing, that we've just bundled them together.
Go about halfway through your staff.
Oh, two sets of minutes.
And the second set, all your commissioners were present, so we do have a quorum for a decision on approval with amendments you so direct.
On page five.
October 25.
Commissioner Rodriguez. I think we could delete the town attorney's comments. I think Ben Burdo answered my question about the 600-foot radius. On the next page, on page six, middle of the page, Commissioner Rodriguez said that staff should come forward with an amendment to the zoning code for the regulations. I think what I was saying was that I didn't agree with a zoning code regulation being inserted into Chapter 5 Business License Revenue.
Okay.
Like having a land use regulation in a business license revenue. Thank you.
I'm going to seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 25th minutes with the two amendments that I made.
I will second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Minutes from October 25th are approved, and we'll take them, October 18th minutes up again at our next meeting. So, does that mean we get to leave?
No, not yet.
Oh, thank God.
I have a question.
Okay.
I just, I was wondering what the status of the Meadow, is it Meadow Way Bridge is?
Yes, that's been brought up just today, in fact. The council approved, let's see, this is late. The council approved the design, it has to go through SEQA and NEPA, so that process is still pending. The current deteriorated boards on the bridge, the town, the town is getting recommendations from contractors, so hopefully, there will be something done in the interim before that is, the bridge as a whole is rebuilt. The reconstruction is estimated to occur by 2020.
That's what I was just wondering. It's off of Cascade, and, yeah, I was talking to a resident that lives right off of there, and he was warning somebody not to cross it, because he was going to fall through. And I thought he was joking, but I went to go look, and he said something about it wasn't going to start, the project wasn't going to start for another two years. So, I kind of just wondered if there was like a temporary fix.
Yeah, we're in the process of seeing, getting recommendations, and then we would proceed expeditiously with repairs. It's, yeah, it's pretty shaky right now. Really shaky.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
Just one thing is, sorry, director's report, right? The Sonoma State on December 1st, Saturday, all day, pretty nifty information, and it's closer than Long Beach, so if any commissioners are interested, I've already signed up Commissioner Swift and myself, so we can all carpool up. And then, a reminder that your commission, based on council action, will be taking over review of tree removal requests, tree alteration requests as of, it's certainly by January. And so, I've approached the town arborist for a training session either at your December or January meeting. So, things to look forward to.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments, issues, blah, blah, blah? Great, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good reports today, you guys.
Very much. Both of you.